Okay, everyone, let's find a seat. Turn off your cell phones. We're going to get underway here in just a minute. Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Deacon Ernie Trujillo to come up and give us a blessing, and after that Supervisor Goodman will lead us in the pledge.
Good morning. I invite everyone here to take a moment of silence, get rid of the noise of the world in our minds and our hearts, and let us pray. All powerful and loving God, we bring a spirit of thanksgiving as the members of this Board of Supervisors come together for their meeting, and we thank you for bringing them together. It is both a privilege and a responsibility of each Supervisor to support, foster, and advance the mission of the County of Pinell. May each of these Supervisors accept this task in total dependence upon you, for it is you who began this work, you who guide it, and will bring it to fulfillment. Send your creative spirit upon them. Open their hearts to recognize your presence among us. Open their minds to respond to your calling. Enable each one of them to draw upon the wisdom and experience of yesterday as they respond to the questions and concerns of tomorrow. Give the members of this Board of Supervisors the freedom to speak the truth boldly and with kindness. Give them patience to listen openly without prejudice. Give them confidence to discover and explore new possibilities. Give them wisdom to discern what is right and good and just. Give them courage to challenge what is questionable. May each Supervisor constantly reflect on whom it is that they serve and represent them to the fullness of their ability. We call upon you, our God, to confirm our prayer and to support the endeavors of this Board of Supervisors now and for as long as they serve. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I better do what I asked everybody else to do, silence this phone. Okay, I've called this Pinell County Board of Supervisors meeting to order for April 30th, 2025. First item of business we have is discussion and approval or disapproval of waiving attorney-client privilege of a legal opinion letter dated April 28th authored by Scott Rhodes and of the Spencer Finn or Fain Firm, who is engaged as assistant advise in the determination whether or not Pinell County Attorney's Office has conflict of interest in this board regarding that. First thing I want to ask is, we don't have Mr. Rhodes on board yet?
No, Chairman, he has not joined the call yet. We're actually sending an email right now to confirm attendance.
Okay. I want to get a couple of minutes here just to work the technical issues out. So he's on. Attorney Rhodes, can you validate your on-line at this point?
Chairman, I have just dialed in. Can you hear me?
We can. Do you have anybody with you at this time?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Jessica Gale, my law partner, has also called in. I tried to get in through Google Meet, but apparently that didn't work, so I tried the phone dial-in. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Thank you. So I've just opened with the agenda item of asking the Board of Supervisors if they want to waive privilege on the letter that you sent. So at this point in time, before we discuss any matters of that letter, I'm asking the Board of Supervisors, does anybody want to make a motion to waive privilege?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we waive privilege for item number one, as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. So Counselor Rhodes, I just, we've authorized you to waive privilege, and you can discuss this letter. I want to make sure that for the audience and everybody participating understands that we've only waived privilege on this letter itself, only the letter and the opinion that came from it. So, Mr. Rhodes, would you like to give us a kind of a summary of what it says? And also, I want to announce it will be posted to the minutes of this meeting now. Did you have something?
Yes, Chairman, it's going to actually, I'm also going to post it to the actual agenda item as well.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Rhodes, can you hear me?
I can, Mr. Chairman. Would you like me to explain the letter at this point?
Yes, if you would, please.
Thank you, and I apologize, we have a little bit of a delay, which is why I'm not as responsive as I would like to be.
Okay.
On April 28th, 2025, Ms. Gale and I authored the letter that you have just, for which you have just waived privilege with respect to the letter itself. The scope of our representation is really very straightforward, as is the conclusion that we have reached in that letter. On April 4, 2025, the Board authorized and instructed the county manager to retain counsel for the limited question as to whether there is an actual potential conflict of interest between the Pinell County Attorney's Office and the county and the Board with respect to employment matters. And I'll focus first on the scope of that assignment. The question before us was whether the county attorney is precluded due to a conflict of interest from advising the Board and representing the Board only with respect to certain hiring requests and hiring, and actual hires that have occurred recently. And because, our conclusion was that because those hires pertained to the county attorney's office, the county attorney has an interest in having those hires approved according to the way that they believe they should be approved. Questions have arisen on the side of the county administration and the Board as to the propriety of some of the hires or just how those hires should be handled. And because of that situation, our conclusion is that the county attorney does have a conflict of interest with respect only to those employment matters. Because the county attorney's, the county attorney's office has a conflict of interest, then under Arizona law, the Board is able to and can retain its own counsel to advise the Board as to those employment matters. The county attorney can continue to advocate for its position on its own, but it cannot direct or advise the Board with respect to those employment matters. And then finally, our recommendation is given the sensitivity of the issues and the fact that we're dealing with hires and ostensibly some people who are already performing their tasks, we recommend that the Board and the county attorney act quickly from this point on to, for the Board to retain counsel and then to work efficiently to try to resolve those issues, bearing in mind that the issues themselves pertain to the expenditure of public funds, which obviously is an important issue, the public's interest, both from the county attorney's point of view and the Board's point of view, and of course, within legal parameters, the interests of the concerned individual employees or potential employees. That is the conclusion that we reached. Again, this is a very narrow issue. In essence, is the Board authorized to retain separate counsel in regard to the employment matters? And the answer is yes, it is, and it can proceed to do so. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Do any of the Board members have any questions of our attorney at this point?
Mr. Chair, just a quick, Mr. Rhodes, just a quick, just for the public's interest, this is in no way wholesale removing the county attorney from doing his job. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. This is a narrow set of issues related to these employment matters. Arizona law requires that, and if, in any time with respect to any specific discreet matter, the county attorney or the county Board believes that there might be a conflict of interest, or if the county attorney believes there might be a conflict of interest, then in regard only to that discreet matter can the Board retain separate counsel. So this is an example of that kind. It does not in any way limit or restrict the county attorney's role as the attorney for the county and the Board in other respects.
Thank you.
Mr. Rhodes, we heard a, like, something happened on the phone. Did somebody else join the call? Or do you know, was that your partner?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Yes, yes, it is me. It's Jessica Gale. I'm partners with Scott Rhodes.
Oh, okay. So you did get, okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Rhodes at this time? Okay, that brings us to item number two of discussion approval or disapproval of directing the county manager to take appropriate actions with respect to determinate, determination as to conflict of interest with the Pinell County Attorney's Office regarding employment matters. So, do they have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move that we direct the county manager to retain outside legal counsel to represent the Board due to the determination that the county attorney's office is unavailable to represent the Board due to a conflict of interest regarding employment matters.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the Board.
Everyone out.
Okay. Item number three, county managers' report, information only. Leo?
Thank you, Chairman. Just two announcements to make. One, congratulations and thank you to our workforce innovation and opportunity team. They had, April 25th, had a career fair in Eloy. As you know, with the transition of Nicola Motors, there are a lot of employees looking and a lot of employers looking for employment. And so we had a very successful event, you know, up to 10 employers, including the Eloy Police Department, and Walmart, Corecivic, and other industrial entities like Changchung, spoke with many qualified candidates that they would like to hire as well. You know that Lucid Motors picked up assets from Nicola and that they have plans and intentions to hire employees as well. And then, just as a kind of a public service announcement, so to speak, we did have a virus that was identified at our animal care and control center. So there are some changes in the operations due to containment and safety for the animals. Anybody interested can, please do look at our website on that, and there'll be detailed information there for them. And that happened on Monday. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Leo? Okay, moving to item number four, presentation of certificates of service employees of 20, 25 years. Leo?
Thank you, Chairman. We have 10 employees to celebrate this morning, and for the sake of time, if it's okay with you and the team, we'd like to just group them up by elected officer or department when there are multiple in one area. In this one, we only have one, and first, in the adult probation office, we have Angela Jones, who has been with us for 20 years and is currently a probation supervisor. I believe Director Fury is here, and Angela, hi, welcome.
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors. I'm John Fury, Chief Prostration Officer. Thank you for taking the time today to recognize Angela for her 20 years of service to Pinell County. Angela and I started within a few months of each other, and I think about what life was like 20 years ago when we started. We both came from retail. We were both in our 20s, not married, no kids. A simpler life, right? But we've come a long way, and it's been a great journey. Over the course of her 20-year career with adult probation, Angela has served in Florence, Casa Grande, and Apache Junction. Her experience spans a wide range of responsibilities, from managing administrative caseloads to work in directly in the field supervising probationers. Angela's dedication and strong work ethic have led her to advance through the ranks from probation officer to lead officer to her current role as a supervisor. No matter the position, Angela has consistently treated others with dignity and respect. She firmly believes that people should not be defined by their mistakes, and she's been a driving force and motivating people towards positive and lasting change. We thank Angela for her service. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If I could just take a second to thank John today for our friendship and being such an amazing coworker over the last 20 years. Now that he's chief, I might stick around a few more, so, thank you.
Don't run off, because we'll have a group photo here in a little bit. Next.
Next, we have Cynthia Kassler from the Assessor's Office, and Assessor Wolf, I believe, is here, or John. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board. John Ellinwood, Chief Deputy Assessor. Cindy Kassler began her career with the county in 2005 in child supports office. She then moved over to the Assessor's Office where she took on the role of appraiser as she advanced to a senior appraiser, and then further advanced to lead appraiser, which is her current position. She specializes in commercial properties across Pinell County and plays a key role in training new staff. Known for her strong work ethic, dedication, and conscientiousness, Cindy is consistently dependable and puts forth quality effort in all she does. She actively seeks opportunities to enhance her skills and approaches every challenge with a helpful mindset. And she's great to work with. She's just, she's just the perfect county employee, just cares about what she does, puts everything she has into it. So we really thank Cindy for her work for 20 years.
Leo?
Next, we have Sarah Lawrence with the Clerk of the Superior Courts Office. Is Ms. Padilla our clerk here? It doesn't look like either are present, but thank you, Sarah, for your years of dedication and hard work, and we celebrate you. Next, we have two from the county attorney's office. We have Craig Cameron, who's been with us 25 years, and Reagan Whitig, who has been with us for 20 years, and County Attorney Miller.
Mr. Chair, if I could just have a moment?
Yes, please.
We have two fantastic employees, actually leaders in the office. One of the things we pride ourselves on in the county attorney's office is the attempt to promote from within and to find people, great people, from this county in order to promote. Both these individuals, Craig Cameron actually just recently celebrated his retirement, and he was such a fantastic employee, we begged him to come back, and he's now working with us part-time. So he's been at--
I don't know about Craig.
I begged, I begged. But no, he's such a valuable member. I know he's advised this particular board and many county departments, and so we're very, very happy to have him back. Reagan is leader of our victim advocates section, and I don't know, and I know we've talked about this a little bit, and we had a presentation, I believe, last month on the importance of her and those positions. But think about there on the front lines of all of the victim services and the people who call in, who are having the worst day and potentially the worst moment of their lives. She's the one that answers those calls. And because of that care and compassion that she provides, we, victims receive their due process and just services from the county attorney's office and from Pinell County generally. She's in charge of so many things, and we appreciate her leadership and her dedication to the office for these past 20 years. So with that, I would like to appreciate both of them today.
I just want to thank members of the Board for the recognition. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Sure.
Mr. Chair, may Mr. Cameron speak?
Absolutely. Mr. Cameron, I love debating with him time to time.
No, 25 years ago, in March, I started here. I didn't start my legal career in Pinell County. I started in another county, and in that county, one of the local stories was as to the county attorney, the new hires would be shuffled into being introduced to the county attorney, pleasantries would be exchanged, and then they would be shuffled out and then told, if you find yourself on the elevator with the county attorney, don't try to engage in conversation. Essentially, the elected official was sort of off limits to the staff. When I started here, I was handed a stack of files, get familiar with them, and as I was reviewing them, I had a knock on the door, and in the doorway was Carter Olson, the county attorney. He asked me, can I have a moment of your time? Him being the county attorney and I being the employee, I didn't turn him away. But that attitude, he sat down with me and explained his philosophy with the office, indicated his appreciation of me coming aboard, and he was never unavailable. He was never off limits. I have never found any elected official in this county that has ever been off limits. No executive has been off limits. And that is the nature and the culture of, I believe, this county. And believe me, I appreciate it. Being able to engage in robust argument at times is essential, and if you don't have access, that doesn't happen. That tradition has continued. I've put the new county attorney up to a tree to see what he smells. And in fact, it was a ponderosa pine, and the smell is of a, sort of a smoky vanilla. This is distinctive. So we're involved, we're engaged. We never are shut down, and I really appreciate that. I'm grateful for the opportunity to have worked in a county that is so interactive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have four employees from Development Services. We have Dennis Lilly, been here 25 years, got a hoot. And Mr. Ortiz is coming up. We have, I'm sorry if I don't pronounce the first name right.
Everisto.
Yeah, Everisto. Lizaraga, been here 20 years. Juan Nieto, 25 years. And Sylvia Mondahar, 20 years.
Joe Ortiz, Development Services Managing Director. Great opportunity to speak on behalf of some great employees. I promise I'll be short, quick, but large appreciation for these folks. Going to do a tag team real quick so we can get some of these folks to give some of their direct employers the top. First up, Danny.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board, Celeste Garza, Deputy Director. It's my privilege today to help recognize four outstanding employees who have longstanding dedication to Pinell County and has made a real and lasting difference in our communities. Danny, Dennis Lilly, 25 years. He served as our Quality Assurance Lead. He's ensuring that transportation projects across the county are built to the highest standards. Over his 25 years, he's also served key roles in heavy construction and our San Tan Yard foreman. Danny's a true team player, always available to answer questions, provide training and support to others when needed. His commitment to excellence and teamwork has been instrumental to our team's success. Thank you, Danny, for your service to the community.
Next, we'll have Jim talk, say a few words about our guys in yellow here.
I'm Jim Hegan-Botham. Chairman Miller, Board of Supervisors, I'm Jim Hegan-Botham, Development Services Manager, and it's my privilege to recognize these two outstanding employees with longstanding dedication to Pinell County. Juan Nieto, 25 years of service to Pinell County. Juan truly defines dedication, commuting from Oracle to Florence and San Tan for the past 25 years to perform his duties. His expertise in vegetation control has helped keep a roadway safe, and he takes great pride in his work. Juan has mentored many new employees and played a vital role in community cleanup events, election troubleshooting efforts. He has been incredibly dependable and productive team member throughout his career. Juan, we appreciate your hard work and dedication. Excuse me, boy, I have a bloody nose this morning.
Let me try to do Everisto, Everizaraga.
20 years of service to Pinell County, affectionately known as, and I quote, "The I Love You Man." As he is known, Everisto rings not only skill but heart to his work. With expertise in vegetation control, roll-off operations, and greater work, Everisto has also trained many new employees over these years. His positivity, willingness to help, and dedication to community cleanup events, after-work calls, and election support make him a valued and cherished part of our team. Everisto, we appreciate your dedication and hard work.
All right. Sylvia Mondahar. Sylvia started with Pinell County Public Works back in 2005 as an accountant tech three. I won't say that's a long time ago, but we don't even have that classification anymore. But shortly after that, in 2009, she moved over to the facilities. And then in 2014, she came back to the place she loves, I guess, which is the Public Works, Development Services side of the world, and we're very thankful for that. She came back as an accountant, shortly moved up to accountant senior, and now she's an accountant supervisor. So she progressed through her career, and I'm not sure how she balanced it, but she did a great job. She raised the family and continued her education as a bachelor's degree that really helped her and helped the county. She is one of those leaders that leads by example. She's one of our mentors to all our younger staff. It's one of those abilities to adapt to what changes are coming, and she's made it very easy for us whenever we did that combined-- And she's made it very easy for us whenever we did that combining of the two departments between Public Works and Community Development, because it was that accounting folks that had to adjust, because there was more for them to take on, and it went smoothly. And that's part because of what Sylvia does and brings to the table. So I'd like to thank her for all that she's done. I appreciate her leadership and I, I think she'll be here another 20 years. She got the kids out of the house, so now she's ready to go another 20, I think. Thank you, Sylvia.
Give you guys an opportunity, you want to say something? You sure?
I'll allow 20-minute speech. Is that everyone? One more.
Mr. Chairman, we have one more employee to celebrate. We have Robert Evans with the Sheriff's Office, who's been with us 20 years, is currently captain. I believe Sheriff Teepel is here to speak.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Pinell County citizens, Rob Evans has 20 years with the Pinell County Sheriff's Office, but he has a lifetime of public service. He's been in law enforcement for over 30 years, and I can be the first one to tell you that he's just getting started. As a military veteran also, I thank him for his lifetime of dedication and public service. I have had the fortunate opportunity to work for him when he was a sergeant, I worked for him when he was a lieutenant, and I worked for him when he was a captain. And he's one person that I can definitely tell you, I can call both a friend and a mentor. He's always been an excellent person to work for because he gives clear, concise direction and he gives you the support to follow through with those directions. And I appreciate that service from him. And this is an inside joke that the members of the Sheriff's Office will understand, but we all volunteered to be here. No woman was drafted. Thank you very much.
Group picture now? We need everybody back up here.
Our county boys went out, got back on the road. Are you leaving? Yeah. Where are you going?
No.
All right, we got a big group here.
Big crowd, yeah.
So I'm going to need some of the shorter folks to be up front, please. Come over, come on down here, please, if I could. Let's go ahead and, come on up, you guys don't be shy, come on up. Right over here, there we go. Danny, you're hiding over here. I know, we were going to try to make this work. Okay, I'm going to try to do this as high as possible so I can get everybody's beautiful faces. I will make sure to take about three of them.
Everybody look at a different camera.
Everyone look at Gina.
Yeah, everybody look at me. Okay, all right, here we go. We're going to take three of them, okay? So one, two, three. We'll take another one. We will take one more.
And just hold that real quick, look over here, please. There we go, keep looking. Thank you, folks.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
It's a bit cold this weekend, again.
All right. Okay, this brings us to item number five on the agenda, which is updates from each of the supervisors. We'll start with Rich.
More exciting stuff, so I guess we'll wait. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for attending today. I also like to announce that in the Maricopa office, we have a conference room that is open to the public and it's being utilized quite well and I appreciate the fact that the county has that there. So people are coming in to do crafts and have meetings and it's worked out really well for people who can't get meeting rooms in the city of Maricopa. Also, I attended the LG ribbon cutting, which I see we have a video coming up on that, so I won't say too much. I was also invited to the Pinell County Children's, it was a week of the young child celebration, and it was amazing. It was a great thing out at Auction, in the Auction Reservation, and we had quite a turnout. Vendors were there and everything, so. Let's see, attended City Council, City Maricopa Sales Tax for the open house, for the half-cent sales tax for the 347 and other roads. Queen Creek, also, I attended their town hall, City Council meeting, or town meeting. Also, went to a ribbon cutting for the Hope Women's Center ribbon cutting in Casa Grande. It was awesome and it was a great turnout. They had some people there, they built some new shade area, so when they show up there, especially coming in the summer, they'll be able to have some shade so they can hang out outside. Also met with the new chairman, Lopez, from the Auction Indian Community. We have a great relationship out there in Maricopa and we want to continue to have that with the new chairman and the new board. Also attending, also the City Council meeting for Coolidge just the other day on Monday. And that's it, folks. So just out being busy, attending meetings, making sure that my district is being well-served and they know that they have somebody here to serve them. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. What's up next? Supervisor Goodman.
In District Two.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. No, that's okay, thank you. In District Two, we just had recently a community cleanup this last weekend. We had a pretty good turnout for that. I don't, we've got a video, but we're not going to show that today. We've got another one. But it was very, very well attended. Our yards, our employees at the Public Works do a really good job on these cleanup projects that we do across the county. And I really appreciate them and the time and effort that they spend to help us in this decision that we made. In addition to that, the, there's a new incorporation effort that's been put forth to the people there in Santan Valley. They turned in their signatures just this last week and we've got a video to show that and how many signatures they ended up with, about 10,400 or something like that. Anyway, they'll talk more about it in the video.
We were definitely not anticipating a crowd today.
We unloaded six months of work.
Typically, when somebody files either a petition or as a candidate, it's just a few people, so to see that there was an entourage today was a little bit surprising.
This has been a story over 15 years in the works. It's a movement and people are excited in the community.
We received over 10,000 signature petition sheets today.
Since 2010, this area's tried to get enough petitions together to be put on a ballot so that the people could decide whether or not they want to be a municipality. It's failed multiple times.
Back in October, some members of the community brought to the Board of Supervisors requesting the ability to circulate signature petitions for an incorporation effort for an area called Santan Valley.
We really appreciate what the county has done for us, but we're over 100,000 people. And so the county was never set up to run a city of 100,000 people. It's time that we take charge and start to make decisions for our own community and our future. And so our goal is to give Santan Valley residents a choice to decide their own future. In the number of incorporation attempts that have happened in the past, it's never gone to a vote, it's never gotten past this stage of getting enough signatures, and people are hungry for it. Those boxes represent, I think, a statement from the community that they want this and this is going to be the best path forward for their future, and we're excited to go to the ballot box and to win this thing and make it happen.
After we accomplish the verification of the petitions, and then it goes to the random signature verification sampling, then what will happen is we'll present that information to the Board of Supervisors and then they have the ability to call the election, which means Elections Department will bring it to the ballot for voters to vote on in August.
Then the voters will be able to vote whether or not they want a town. It will be up to the Board of Supervisors, the first group of individuals that'll be on the council, will be up to the Board of Supervisors to appoint those. It'll probably be between five and seven individuals that'll be on that first town council. Then it'll be up to that town council to determine the direction or what they want to do, the goals that they have. The one thing to remember is that they have a certain budget that they have to stay within. They cannot go outside of that budget. State law prohibits them from doing that. So when they first come out of the gate, they're only going to have X amount of dollars that they're going to be able to use to do the roads, infrastructure, and the police department. They're going to have to live within that budget for the first couple of years until they formulate a game plan going forward. They're going to have to do a five-year, a 10-year plan. What does that entail? Is it going to need, require additional dollars to do it? If it does, then that plan, along with the way to finance it, will have to go back to the voters, for the voters to vote. So it will always be in control of the voters. If they're not happy with the way the government is ran, they can vote in individuals that they do like. They are in control now. There will really only be one layer of government. That's the municipality. It puts government right there locally, so that you have the ability to choose people from your own community to serve.
It was really great, because there's so much work that has gone into this, and it was great for our team to be able to high-five and say, wow, over two years, we actually have done it.
Anything else?
We'll be holding a, I don't, I'm not for sure what the date's going to be, but we'll be holding a meeting that will actually decide whether or not it's going to be put on a ballot. Call for election.
All right, as quick as we can. All right. Jeff, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, it's been kind of a busy week. Friday night was a national night out in Salmon Well. That's an annual event where the, all the locals get to come out and talk with elected officials, local charity groups, nonprofits, Sheriff's Department. Goes on all over the country. It was a fun night, a little windy, but it was nice. It wasn't in the middle of August like it was last year where it was just like 120 degrees up. Saturday night, back up in Oracle for International Dark Sky Night. The last week, the 21st through the 28th, was International Dark Sky Week, and Oracle State Park is, let's see, what would be, dedicated dark sky park area. And so we had astronomers out there, we had speeches by a few people, myself included. It's kind of fun. Another windy night as well. And then we've got, I have a video here from the volunteer appreciation luncheon that was a week ago, a week and a half ago. And could you please run that, Natasha? I just want to, and right before you go, just the fact that all these people volunteer, some of you included out here in the audience, volunteer to work with the county, to get our jobs done. We have these statutory commissions and boards that we have to have with the county. I think we have 14, 18, thank you. And it's really a great effort by all the citizens of the county to come out and volunteer for these, these commissions. So if you could please run it.
Today, we have the Pinell County Boards and Commissions Appreciation Luncheon here at the 1891 Historic Courthouse. Boards and commissions, we have 18 at Pinell County, where citizens that live here in the county volunteer their time for civil engagement on our different boards and commissions. Like we have Workforce Development Board, we have our Planning and Zoning Board, we have our Transportation Board, just to name a few.
It's an unpaid position. They do it in their own free time and they spend a lot of time. I can tell you Planning and Zoning, this week had a 2,000-page agenda. That's a lot to ask of somebody to go through.
Each supervisor district have a unique portrait that they raffle off showcasing their districts here in the county.
I actually got a shirt. I had been eyeballing it for a little while. I actually looked for it online, too, so I'm very excited that it actually manifested itself into my life already, so I'm very excited, actually, I'm not going to lie.
We have citizens here in Pinell County that really, truly care about their community. And so therefore, they step up and they volunteer to serve on our different boards and our commissions.
Not just being like, oh, I just live here and I pay taxes here and they make my roads and take my money. It's like, no, you're putting your time to want to be here and represent who you are and where you live and be able to go into a different area and be like, no, that's where I come from and it's a beautiful place that I come from. And to be able to give my time back to something that's given so much to myself already is just a small part of what I can do.
Some of our individuals are retirees, some of them still work nine to five. So it's important to recognize them when they do take that extra time to give back and serve within their community.
It's difficult. All these positions are constitutionally required of us as a county, and they give it their own free time to come do it and we really appreciate it.
It's very nice seeing new people, meeting all the people that are on the board, seeing everybody that I haven't met yet.
One of our appointees was walking out and his response was, I can't wait to see you next year, Natasha. And so that tells me that they really, truly appreciate the volunteer appreciation lunch every single year.
So tomorrow is May 1st, and we've still had very little rain, and because of that, the Forest Service is going to stage two fire restrictions, which means no open fires. Unfortunately, no shooting in the National Forest. And usually BLM, Bureau of Land Management, and the State Trust Land usually follow suit and does the same exact restrictions. So everybody be careful of that. District Five and District Four, the Jeff's districts, we are the fire districts also because we are the brushiest, so everybody be careful out there. Also, I have a video, too, of some big news that happened with my sister district, District Two. We have now the training center, it's opened up at CAC. I think every one of our districts has a CAC branch in it, which is cool, the way they've spread out all over the county. And in District Five, up in Apache Junction, will be a training center for the new LG battery plant, which will be built in Supervisor Goodman's district, which is being built. And we all had a tour, as Mr. Vitello said. So here's a video of that and what all it means to the county.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure to welcome you to our LG Energy Solutions
So tomorrow is May 1st, and we've still had very little rain, and because of that, the Forest Service is going to stage-two fire restrictions, which means no open fires. Unfortunately, no shooting in the National Forest. And usually BLM, Bureau of Land Management, and the State Trust Land usually follow suit and does the same exact restrictions. So everybody be careful of that. District Five and District Four, the Jeffs districts, we are the fire districts also because we are the brushiest, so everybody be careful out there. Also, I have a video too of some big news that happened with my sister district, District Two. We have now the training center that's opened up at CAC. I think every one of our districts has a CAC branch in it, which is cool, the way they've spread out all over the county. And in District Five, up in Apache Junction, will be a training center for the new LG battery plant, which will be built in Supervisor Goodman's district, which is being built. And we all had a tour, as Mr. Vatiello said. So here's a video of that and what all it means to the county.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure to welcome you to our LG Energy Solutions Arizona's April event.
This is the ribbon cutting of the LG aspect of Central Arizona College here at the Superstition Campus.
This was a really very good win for the county, for the town of Queen Creek, for the state of Arizona.
I want to extend a warm welcome to all of our distinguished guests here.
It was a who's who of who actually made this happen. Not only the LG representatives all the way from South Korea, and we're so glad to have them, they're so easy to work with.
I want to express my appreciation to everyone here for your dedicated and unwavering support.
This is a training center for that huge factory that you see down at the end of Ironwood. And it's, it's just great for the community, it's great for the region, and it's great for employment.
This particular building, this is actually where they're going to be doing a lot of the training for a lot of the employees that are going to be employed at the LG facility.
Well, one of the things that I've always worried about and stressed is, we've built all these houses, where's everybody going to work? So not only is this factory going to have 1,500 jobs in the factory, but it's already employing, there were hundreds of people down there getting this ready. This is many, many more jobs than 1,500.
When I first came into office eight years ago, the mentality of the nation as a whole has shifted in the way that we educate, and we're realizing that we need to be more specialized in our type of education. A traditional college degree takes a lot of time, a lot of money, and a lot of information that the student is asked to absorb isn't necessarily important for their day and time. And so as we've shifted with the educational processes, this is one facility that we've made a complete shift on how we educate. It's specific to the needs of the industry that's coming.
The outlook for jobs looks great here in Pinal County. It all, a lot of it starts right here at the Superstition Mountain Campus, right here in Apache Junction, at the training facility, plus all of the other jobs that you can get here with electrical, plumbing, nursing. It's all right here on this campus, so we're proud of it, we're glad to have it.
That's it?
Okay. Thank you. We do have a video of my town hall. I want to thank particularly the staff for attending and then the community that attended. I was told by the participants that they, it was very informative, they learned stuff that they hadn't learned. I want to thank everyone though for attending, particularly from the staff, because I think it really does give us a broad picture of what all happens at the county. There's a lot of things going on all the time, so anyway, I want to run the video.
VCR is flashing 12, is that?
Today, we held our town hall for District Three. We're fortunate enough to have Dana Lewis, our recorder, our new Pinal County Sheriff, Ross Teepel, and then our new county attorney, Brad Miller, then our public works engineer, Chris Waterman. Chris has a real important position in our county with being the county engineer because he has to oversee road projects, drainage projects, flood control projects. If you think about flood control, you have a wash, a bridge, and a road that all have to be maintained. And a lot of people don't realize, Pinal County has 200 bridges. There's a lot going on there, but he's done a fantastic job.
I thought it was neat to see an engineer, you know, and on top of that, your district attorney. Yeah, the sheriff being here. I think it's great that he even asked about jobs and if anyone was interested or get the word out, you know, because sometimes that's what it takes.
I liked it that there was people that actually were ready to receive information. They, they had specific questions that they wanted answers, but they also wanted to just get information. There was multiple people I saw that, it wasn't people down on their phones not listening to it. They came here voluntarily because they wanted to receive information, and when I looked out of the sea of people there, everyone was taking notes just about. When, when a question was asked, it might not be their question, but it was a question that was asked, and they're like, oh, I should have asked that. Now I want to hear the answer for it. So they're writing down the answer, and then they can go back to their communities and relay that information to their family and friends.
I think a lot of good questions, a very broad array of questions, everything from homeless to zoning to water and transportation.
We needed some answers. We were looking to just find out what Pinal County was about, where we're living, how things happen.
I think the most difficult topics that we deal with are the zoning issues. Property rights in Arizona have evolved over the years, and it has to do with the tremendous amount of growth. You know, people that bought property five or six years ago never envisioned a subdivision being near them, even though that subdivision was entitled as much as 20 years ago. They just never have built on it. Well, now they want to build on it, and they're going, we want to keep, you know, the open space. Well, that person already has the entitlements to build a subdivision here.
It was real important for me to get them to understand that we have crime suppression details where we take all of our specialty units, work with our federal and local and state partners to target specific areas where we're seeing an issue with, and get law enforcement in there working to keep Pinal County the safest large county in Arizona.
When you're growing at the rate that Pinal County is growing, seventh fastest-growing county in the United States, the fastest-growing county this side of the Mississippi, how do you stay ahead of it? We're going to do the best we can with what we have, and we try to have a fair and balanced approach.
I think the questions that the public were asking were great questions.
Just always a pleasure working with Supervisor Miller and the rest of the county staff.
I think it's really important that your representative, I'm the representative of District Three, takes the time to hear from the folks in the community. Well, I want to thank staff for that video. Not, not a large turnout, but a very engaged turnout of folks, so we'll have more of those in the future and happy to do it. All right, brings us to item number six. Discussion and update on the 25 state and federal legislation. I have no report this week because the governor decided not to sign bills for a couple, a week almost. So CSA has not met for two weeks in a row. I suspect we'll meet this, this Friday and go over, now that they're, they've come to that, they've figured out how to get the governor to sign her DDD bill and moving forward from there. But Dana, Dana, I think I saw Dana earlier, yeah, there she is. Do you have anything on your side?
Chairman Goodman, members of the board, Dana Lewis, Pinal County Recorder. Today marks the 108th day in session. Some things to be looking at as we end the session is that we're rumored to be Sine Day the end of May, beginning of June. And right now, a big push and watch will be on the Joint Legislative Budget Committee. This is where they'll be looking at how they're spending the taxpayer dollars. Some other things that we were hoping in the elections world, the need to move the primary election further away from the general election so that we're ensuring we can meet deadlines for ballot design and development. We thought that that was going to be on a bill this year, 2006 actually, as a striker. That didn't happen. And then the governor actually vetoed 2006 and 2007, which were bills that we had been working with her as the Secretary of State for a couple sessions. Some disappointments there, but again, like Chairman Miller had said, that, you know, there was kind of a moratorium on her signing anything for several days, so we're in a hold pattern. I did get information late yesterday that there were a bunch of bills for the elections world that are going to pass out of committee, and we're waiting to see what happens with those from there out. I do suspect that our next legislative update, there will be a whole lot to talk about. Gentlemen?
Any questions for Dana by Jan? Okay, thank you. Wait and see. That's pretty optimistic though, to be Sine Day by May, dude. All right. Thank you. Update on related election issues. Dana, you're up again.
Chairman Miller, members of the board, Dana Lewis. I'm here to discuss some of the upcoming things going on with the Elections Department, voter registration, early voting, and the recorder's office. Their first quarter reports of 2025 went out to party chairs on the 7th of April. Those are the voter history report and voter registration reports. They're then submitted to the chairs so they can disseminate that information to their district leadership. We have over 312,000 voters in Pinal County. It is important to note that this is up from 310,000 that were reported at the end of the year, beginning of January. And that not only includes the growth of the county, but does indicate the over 10,000 voters that were removed due to voter maintenance, as required statutorily. Some other key percentages, parties not designated, other or independent voters now have the largest percentage of voters in Pinal County. The next, and that's at 41.4%. Republicans are at 38.2%, Dems at 17.4%. And then our baby parties, the No Labels at 1.7, Libertarians at .09, and the Green at .2. We have updated our website with the precinct commitment information and also with how those precinct committees can get in touch with their party chairs. Again, statutorily, we're required as partisan persons to elect at the annual meeting leadership. And Kirk Filer is the chairman of the Republican Pinal County Party, Jen Hill's boss for the Dems, and Jess Pastorkey is the new Libertarian Party point of contact. Their emails and phone numbers are available on the Pinal County Elections website. The CD7 election will be held July 15th. Again, it will only affect about 4,000 voters in Pinal County, affecting Precinct 38, 53, 67, and 91. Some very important dates going into this election that voters need to be aware of is the write-in deadline for this is June 5th. We have already approved and proofed our ballots. Those proofs will go out to party chairpersons on May 6th. Our internal LNA is June 6th. Our Secretary of State LNA is required because it is a federal election, will be June 12th. And it is open to the public if anybody would like to check out the Pinal Votes facility. Early voting starts June 18th. Yuakava ballots will be sent out on May 30th. We have scheduled the county canvas for July 23rd, but we'll talk about that coming up in the July election updates. 90-day notices went out for this election, and why that's important is because, again, this is a primary election, and Arizona participates in open primaries. So those 90-day notices are going to look like what we call the Have a Party and Pick a Party. So if you're registered with the Libertarians, No Labels, Dems, Republicans, you're going to already have that information and remind you that if you have any updates to your voter registration to fill out that card. However, if you're a PND, independent, or other voter, it gives you the opportunity to select if you would like a Republican or Democrat ballot because they do participate in open primaries. Now, if you're wanting a Lib, Dem, or Lib, No Labels, or Green, they are closed, so if you're independent, you don't have the ability to request that ballot. Because this is a special election, nobody knew that this was coming, it's not scheduled, we're also sending out to voters who don't get an active early voting ballot by mail, we're sending them a postcard letting them know this is happening so that they know how to get in touch with us if they have any questions about their polling locations because we are precinct-based, or any other additional information. Some other things that you will see either on our website, in the news across the state, or on social media, letters have gone out to citizens in Pinal County that owe us documented proof of citizenship. For over 20 years, voters in Arizona have been required to provide documented proof of citizenship. There was a glitch with the MVD state system trying to be proactive going into these elections. We wanted to notify these voters that this documentation is not in their record and to please contact the voter registration staff so we can walk them through what we're going to need from them. It's, it's an up-to-date passport, a vital records birth certificate, and some other information that they can provide to us. It's real easy to contact us. You can either call the Citizen Contact Center, email us at voters@pinal.gov, or even contact any of our direct offices. The last few times we've been here and talking about re-presincting, it's only for the public so that they know that that has not stalled. We had that Board of Supervisor Special Session or Work Session on March 13th. We've had two since voter education working groups where this was the topic that voters wanted to talk about. That was March 28th and April 25th. And then we met with a group of individuals out of the Santan Valley area who had some more questions about re-presincting on April 29th. We've been gathering all of that feedback, it is in a working document. Our next steps are, we meet with the GIS Department tomorrow, we'll redraw some maps for projections, and then we'll bring that to you, the Board of Supervisors, on July 2nd. And then if we are going to go forward with this, then it would be agendized for September. The request to incorporate Santan Valley petitions were filed. They had come to the department and requested from the board to circulate the petitions in October. They needed, the target at that point was 6,107 signatures. On March 22nd, they filed those petitions, sorry, that's April 22nd, they filed the petitions with 10,732 signatures. We do a verification in the election side of the House first, making sure that the notaries are complete, that the full line is filled out. After that, we had got down to 10,408 accepted petition signature lines, 324 were rejected. Of the next number that were accepted, 533 then went to the Recorder's Voter Registration Department for signature verification. We were required to accomplish a random sampling. That random sampling accepted 391 of those signatures, and 142 of those signatures were rejected. We then take that, we have a multiplier that is enacted, and then it creates an acceptance and rejection rate. So with that, then the tally comes to, for those over 10,000 signatures that were submitted, 7,531 signatures were accepted, meaning the minimum of 6,107 signatures that were required for next steps. Chairman Goodman, you did state that we'd enter, Mr. Goodman, Mr. Goodman, sorry, apologies, that we would be bringing this forth. We have documentation waiting to set a date for the call of election. Other notable things, we are never, ever bored at the Elections or Recorder's Office. We've done that RFI for the poll worker and campaign finance solutions software, working with their procurement team to move forward on that fast before these upcoming elections. In 2025, we will see more elections than we did in the 2024 presidential election year, folks. We've updated our website, and we're working on our social media to ensure that voters are constantly aware of what's going on in our world, and they have that information at the touch of a button. We've accomplished the polling site tour to ensure that we are ADA compliant. We're definitely good to go for the CD7 election, but making sure that we're going to be okay going into the final elections of 2025. One of the things that sometimes isn't talked about is our coup plans, our contingency operation plans in the event of emergencies. We have thoroughly reviewed that plan, and we'll be working with the Office of Emergency Management to make sure, God forbid, something were to happen, we've got a plan. The EPM updates have been working with our department and other recorders across the state and the Secretary of State's office, and those are moving along. We have noted that the difference is, it appears all changes and red light edits are being forwarded back to us, and notes are being communicated with us as they go. The RFI for the e-poll books, RFP for the e-poll books was approved at the last Board of Supervisors meeting. We'll be acquiring those in the new budget year. It's to update the outdated poll books that we currently have and to bring on additional equipment that we need because of the growth of the county. We are waiting to work with the Secretary of State and other recorders in implementation of SB 2785. This was originally the bill that moved the primary election up last year, but it did have some caveats on it, and one of them is how we are going to check in early voters at the polls on Election Day. We're in communications with our vendors. I gave you a lot of information, I always do. I can stand for questions, gentlemen.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, very thorough report. Thank you. Brings us to item number eight, decision approval or disapproval of a pro- Brings us to item number eight, decision approval or disapproval of a proclamation declaring May 11th through the 17th, 2025, as Peace Officer Memorial Week. I think Sheriff Deipols is supposed to, outside. Let me get inside. Give us a little background on the proclamation. We will vote, and then he can read the proclamation.
Sorry, I was in Supervisor and Clerk's office. I didn't realize there was a delay. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Pinal County citizens, I'm requesting today that you approve the proclamation, please, for the Peace Officer Memorial.
Okay. Questions? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the proclamation declaring May 11th through May 17, 2025, as Peace Officers Memorial Week.
Second.
Oh, and May 20, May 2025, as Peace Officers Memorial Day.
Okay, I have a motion, and I have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Go ahead and read that proclamation.
I just have to point out that Natasha's awesome. She gave me big enough that a 55-year-old can read it. Whereas the peace officers of Pinal County are known for their devotion and dedication to preserving the peace and safety of every man, woman, and child in this county, and whereas the peace officers of Pinal County are engaged in a difficult and sometimes dangerous profession which at times can lead to injury or even the death of these officers, and whereas each day the peace officers of the state of Arizona endeavor to reduce crime on our streets and dangers on our highways and roadways, as well as to protect us from all other kinds of crimes, and whereas the peace officers of Pinal County also engage in crime prevention programs designed to further enhance the peace and safety of all citizens. Now, therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Pinal County do hereby proclaim May 11th through May 17, 2025, as Peace Officer Memorial Week, and May 8, 2025, as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and urge all citizens of Pinal County to recognize and remember the sacrifices that these officers and their families have made and the legacy they have entrusted to all of us, proclaim this 30th day of April, 2025. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have photo op with this? See Gina showing up with the camera here. So, okay, guys.
Travis, Martine. Trinity. Do you got anybody else on there?
All right, I can get you guys up a little bit further up. Don't be shy, I don't bite. A little bit more.
How much closer?
Yeah, right about here. Right here is good. Yes, yes, there we go. We want to make sure we can see everyone. Yes. A little bit more so we can see you stop right there. Are you there? All right, I'd like to take three. So, one, two, three. One more, and one more. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
That's nice.
All right. Moves us to item number nine, decision approval or disapproval of a proclamation declaring May 4th through May 10, 2025, as National Travel and Tourism Week. Mr. Joel Melman is what, they says here, Joel? Unless you want somebody else.
Michelle.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Joel Melman, Intern Director for Pinal County Economic and Workforce Development Department. And it's my pleasure here to introduce Michelle Carpenter, our Travel and Tourism Coordinator extraordinaire. To give you a little bit of background about this proclamation and offer an opportunity to approve it and then read it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. National Travel and Tourism Week was established by a congressional resolution in 1983 in order to celebrate the travel community and highlight how travel stimulates economic growth, creates quality jobs, inspires new businesses, and elevates the quality of life for citizens every day. In 2020, Pinal County launched Explore Pinal, our tourism initiative. The mission of Explore Pinal is to build a strong economy and quality of life by showcasing memorable experiences, connecting communities, and promoting Pinal County's wide array of unique attractions to visitors and residents alike. I'm here to request for consideration a proclamation declaring May 4th through May 10, 2025, a National Travel and Tourism Week in Pinal County.
Thank you. Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the proclamation declaring May 4th through May 10, 2025, as National Travel and Tourism Week.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Want to read it?
Yes. Proclamation declaring National Travel and Tourism Week in Pinal County, whereas National Travel and Tourism Week was established in 1983 and has become a part of celebrating the U.S. travel community and highlights how travel stimulates economic growth, creates quality jobs, inspires new businesses, and elevates the quality of life for Americans every day. Whereas the travel industry is essential to the success of every industry and will continue to be a critical part of Pinal County's economy, development, and workforce in the coming years. Whereas, travel represents an economic powerhouse for every state and destination across the country with overall economic output of $2.8 trillion in support of, for 15 million American jobs. One in every 11 U.S. jobs depends on travel, making it critical, a critical driver of our economy and a force for connection and opportunity. Whereas, travel spending supports vibrant and safe communities across the United States and in Pinal County, generating $89 billion in state and local tax revenues in 2023 to support essential services such as education, emergency response, public safety, and more. Whereas in 2023, Arizona welcomed 45.2 million visitors who spent a total of $29.3 billion, generating $4.2 billion in tax revenues and supporting 187,000 jobs. Whereas in 2023, Pinal County direct visitor spending reached an estimated $972 million, economic activity generating approximately $81 million in tax revenues and supporting around 840 tourism-related jobs. The tourism industry provided an estimated $545 in tax relief per household, offering a tangible benefit to our residents. Whereas, travel enables success for all industries, including manufacturing, agriculture, defense, healthcare, and more, by driving sales growth, innovation, education, and operation that power our nation's and Pinal County's economies. Whereas, small businesses account for more than 60% of leisure and hospitality employment across the U.S. Whereas, travel is an essential industry, and we must continue to communicate that growing travel activity leads to economic growth, benefits businesses, fosters mutual understanding, and connects our nation. Now, therefore, do I read this?
Yes.
Therefore, we, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim May 4th through 10, 2025, as National Travel and Tourism Week in Pinal County, and urge the citizens of Pinal County to join us in recognizing the essential role this industry plays in our county, proclaimed this 30th of April, 2025.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Photo, photo op. All right. Brings us to item number 11, the Purchasing Division Report. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped to, oh, the most important one. Decision approval, disapproval of proclamation declaring May 4th through the 10th, 2025, as the 56th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Ms. Natasha.
Yes, Chairman and Board Members, Natasha Kennedy, Clerk of the Board. I am seeking approval of the proclamation recognizing the week of May 4th through May 10, 2025, as the 56th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, which celebrates the dedicated work of clerks of the Board. This special week was initiated in 1969 by IIMC members in the United, all IIMC members in the United States, Canada, and 15 other countries, offering an opportunity to recognize and reflect on the role of the clerk of the Board and staff. In 1984, President Ronald Reagan officially declared Municipal Clerks Week to be the full first week of May. And in 1994, and 1996, President Bill Clinton, followed by signing the proclamation that reaffirms this important recognition. And with that, Chairman, Supervisors, I do ask for approval.
Any questions? I'm going to tell you, I've been an elected official for over 20 years, and none of this would happen without clerks. I can tell you that right now. It's the most important position in any government, so. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 10 as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you.
Whereas, the Office of Professional Clerks of the Board, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas, the Office of Professional Clerks of the Board is the oldest among, among public servants. And whereas, the Office of Professional Clerks of the Board provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and play an essential role as the primary source of information. And whereas, clerks of the Board and their support staff have privileged, have implored to be ever mindful of their impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas, professional clerks of the Board continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of their office through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas, although Arizona Clerk Associations may include the word county or municipal in their titles, they share a common goal: to serve their Board and community with integrity, efficiency, and dedication, and to promote the well-being of all residents through transparent and accountability. And whereas, regardless of their specific jurisdiction or organization affiliations, these professionals are united by a shared identity and purpose. They are first and foremost clerks. They are all clerks. Now, therefore, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors do recognize the week of May 4th through May 10, 2025, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation of the professional county clerks of the Board and staff for the vital services they perform and their dedicated commitment to the counties they serve, proclaim this 30th day of April, 2025.
Thank you. Photo op. Okay. Let me get back on track here. Item number 11, Purchasing Division Report. Angie Woods? Ms. Woods?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board. Angie Woods. I'm the Director of the Office of Budget and Finance, and I have today's Purchasing Division Report for April 30, 2025. In the report, the Board has requested to approve one contract award for RFP 253330 for printing and mailing of valuation notices. We're recommending five contract amendments extending contract periods for ROQ 202523, Santan Valley Area Drainage Master Plan, RFP 208226 for Immigration Resource Attorney Services, RFP 232627 for WIOA One-Stop Operator, RFP 243729 for WIOA Adult and Dislocated Worker Service Provider, RFP 245129 for Social Worker Services. There are two purchase orders, purchase or change orders that require your approval in the report, and there are 11 purchase orders utilizing cooperative contracts that we're making you aware of. And lastly, we are seeking approval of one cooperative purchase requisition over the amount of $250,000. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Woods? Hearing none and seeing none? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchasing report dated, what is today's date? April 30 of 2025.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Ayes have it. Somebody has it, thank you. Okay, brings us to item number 12 on the consent items. All I, all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled in a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless the Board, uh, member, county manager, or a member from the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. We have a number of items that have been requested to be pulled, so, um, get ready, everybody. First, Supervisor Miller, I want to pull items F and BD through CE. Supervisor McClure, you have item I.
Yes, sir, and AB and AC.
AB and AC, okay. Anyone else have anything you want pulled on the board?
Which were the other ones you said?
No, yours.
Mine was, uh, F and then BD through CE, and it'll just be information. Okay, uh, County Manager's Office, anything? From the audience, anybody from the audience want anything pulled off the consent agenda? Seeing none? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve consent items A through CU minus F, BD through CE, item I, item AB, and item AC.
Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. So, I will start with item F, which, um, for me is, uh, appointment of, um, of Donna McBride to the Public Safety Retirement Board, and I know Donna's in the audience, I think we have a certificate for her, so I'd like to get a, a photo if you all would be so kind as to approve her appointment to this position.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve item number F as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, thank you. Donna, you want to come up?
We should photobomb these.
As a side note, Donna's filling the position that was vacated by our, Jimmy Kerr, a past county supervisor and community leader for many years, so I think it's very fitting to put Donna in that position. We'll go to item I next. You have somebody?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, item I, yes, that's to, uh, reappoint Selena Diagnino from Florence here to the Merit System Commission. I believe she's in the, I see her sitting in the back. Selena, could you please come forward?
Want to vote on it first?
Oh, I guess so.
I guess, we could vote, okay. You know, yeah, sure. I, I jump ahead. Mr. Chair, I asked, or I move that we approve, uh, the reappointment of Selena Diagnino to the Merit System Commission.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Eyes have it, thank you.
Now, I can go...
Now you can.
Okay.
We all get ahead of ourselves.
This is her reappointment because she's filling in for someone that, uh, for...
All right, count of three, one, two, three, and one more.
We'll try and take this all in order. We have, um, AB and AC.
Yes, AB and AC, uh, there was just a correction on there. They tried to give away my territory and give it to Supervisor Sertie, so it's actually in mine. So, um, just saying, so, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve, um, item AB as presented.
Has it been corrected?
Oh, with the cor, I'm sorry, and I'm sorry with correction, um, to Supervisor District Four.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Eyes have it.
And once again, item AC. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item AC as presented with the correction to Supervisor District Four.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, thank you. Brings me to what I pulled, which is BD to CE. Folks, and, and I, I, this is just more for information for the public so they understand. These are, uh, properties that will be taken off the tax rolls, and we will not be collecting, uh, taxes on these items. There were 28, I believe, um, taxes of $129,000 over two years. Interest, the interest would not be accumulating on an annual basis, but was $78,000, and then for a total of around, uh, $207,000 that's going to be reimbursed. But my point to this is these items, when they're removed, uh, and, uh, put in trust to, uh, the Indian communities, we never receive any more taxes on those, on those parcels. And so, uh, that's about, in this case, these 28, uh, parcels will produce around $60,000 a year in taxes, plus or minus. And, I don't know, I just, I, I, I think there's some inequity here that if we're going to be removing properties from our tax rolls, and property tax is what we live on, there should be compensation either from the federal government, or the state government, or somebody, because we, or given land that has similar value, we are, we're, we're on the short end of the stick on this thing. And I, I don't know that I can really champion a whole lot between now and, uh, my departure from here, but it is a lot of money over a period of time, and it happens on a real regular basis. Pinal County is only 19% privately owned, and with the size of Connecticut. And that is difficult to manage this community or this, this county on those numbers, and if, if we lose a postage stamp of property, I think it gives us challenges from time to time. And that was the only reason I had this item pulled, is I wanted to share those numbers with my colleagues and with, uh, the, the community. But we have no choice, but we have to, we have to do this action, so... Does anybody want to make a motion?
Chairman Miller, I'll make a motion to approve item BD through AC.
CE.
CE. Oh, CD, sorry.
CE.
CE, sorry. Keep, it's okay. I've got to keep turning the pages. Through CE.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Okay, and I think that gets us to... Where does that put us? Yeah. Let me get to the right page first, so I know what I'm doing. I'm going to call an audible here and bring item 16 up. We have some people waiting, if I can find it. We're going to move to item 16, is that right, Mr. Goodman?
Please.
And I okayed it with Natasha, so, um, uh, Mr. Goodman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've requested this to be moved up because we've got one of the individuals in the audience, and I don't know if Darren's here. Where, oh, there he is, he's hiding behind everybody. But, um, there are two of our volunteers that have been part of one of our commissions, which is Planning and Zoning Commission, and was, what was stated earlier, over 2,000 pages on the one, and the time and effort that they spend in, uh, being informed so that they can make their proper judgment call at the time. And the both individuals I've known for several years, um, are not afraid to voice their opinion of things, and oftentimes, in the past, we sometimes have had conflicting output, input, and so, but I appreciate them, that they always stay in the conversation and discuss with me, and they're a true value to our different commissions, especially the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I want to express my gratitude for them accepting this, and I would ask that the Board would approve this. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 16, uh, reappointing Karen Mooney and Darren Schneff to the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Okay, I have, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, thank you.
Do we have a certificate for them?
Is it okay?
Yeah.
Is it okay if we, all right, thanks. Go forth. All right, that brings us to item 13, so I'm going to recess the Board of Supervisors meeting and open up the Desert Vista Sanitary District Board of Directors meeting. Shows here, let me get turned to that page. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled as a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a Board Member or County Manager's Office or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. I believe everything is on the consent, so A and B. Does anybody from the Board want anything pulled? County Manager's Office, public? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve items, the consent items, A and B on the, um, Desert Vista Sanitary District Board of Directors Agenda.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, thank you. I will, uh, to adjourn the Desert Vista Sanitary District and move to the Pinal County Public Health, uh, Health, Public Health District Service. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled in a, uh, as handled as by a single vote on the consent agenda unless a Board Member, County Manager, or a member of the public objects at the time. Again, I believe we have just two items on here, they're both consent. Anybody want anything pulled? Pulled, and for the public, pulled, none. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve items, uh, A and B on the public, uh, meeting for the health services. Boy, I'm really with it today.
Okay, I have, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that interesting motion, yes.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, thank you.
She didn't interrupt, so it must have been okay.
I was close to making... Okay, I adjourned the, uh, Pinal County Public Health Services District, have reopened the Board of Supervisors meeting. I believe this brings us to item number 15, Call to the Public. Do I have any cards?
Yes, three.
Three? Oh, three, that's not bad. Okay, I have three cards at this time. First is Barry McCain. Three minutes. Three minutes, your name and where you reside, or at least generally.
Good morning, Supervisors, my name is Barry McCain. This session has been very difficult at the Legislature, I've been there since 2005. A stolen ballot was like pulling teeth, and I'll give you a reason why. I want you to think about the number 151, but I'm going to go ahead and just read this. It's been very hard for me. I'm a native Arizona from the city of AmeriKopa. I was trained by Dr. Lyon, one of four electrical engineers on the Apollo 13 spacecraft, have a college degree, business degree, and is trained in every transportation vehicle from in space, in the air, on land, and underwater. I wish to thank District One staff for their professionalism and dedication to Pinal County residents. Politics, said Aristotle, is not about satisfying personal needs, but the process of discovering the common good. We must be honest and authentic and willing to do, have a difficult conversation that will lead to the best possible alternative for our people. We should never sacrifice our self-respect, dignity, or humanity for a position of authority. The determining factor between success and failure is the amount of time that passes between the problem, when a problem emerges, and when those involved find a way to honestly and respectfully resolve it. My purpose is to protect free speech, the vote, and education. I'm here on behalf of Pinal County Attorney, who is bound by an ethics committee, because the county attorney has his right to do the job. Now, I know I've trained world-class athletes, not only that, I've also trained security for world leaders all over the country, between my dad, Supervisor Goodman knows. We've been in every major con, conflict, both declared and undeclared, to protect life, my dad, up to 1990. I feel that I should not have to defend my vet, veterans, but they need to be, that's why that lost ballot was so important. We have people making money trying to say they're veterans, and they haven't done anything, not one thing. That's, I said, between 19, World War II and 1990, my dads have been, and I have been, every major conflict, both declared and undeclared, known to man. And the, the attorney, he's responsible to an ethics committee, and I will stand for him. I've had a lot of people, even a Top Gun, that I didn't even agree with. So what I'm saying is this, that, uh, this has got to stop. Have a nice day.
Gail Peters?
Good morning, Board and Chair. I'm Gail Peters, I've appeared before you a number of times over the last few years, and one thing that seems pretty consistent with this meeting is that we have a couple of people who get up here every single meeting and, um, are very negative towards the party that they are not in favor of. And for that reason, and all other, I would like to recognize 100 days of Donald Trump's administration, and I want to say I'm glad that sanity has returned to our county, our country, and also a, a stronger border policy. I think the most of America agrees with me, that's been very necessary, and I'd like to applaud that. Secondarily, I'd like to talk about the fact that... Secondarily, I'd like to talk about the fact that Santan Valley, and you all know this, has attempted to incorporate it at least five separate times, based on all available information. 2004, 2005, 2010, 2017, and 2018 were the incorporation effort that I was very involved in. I've been kicked off a lot of parking lots trying to get signatures. My goal was not so much that I thought we really needed a municipality, but I thought at least the residents here should be able to vote on whether they wanted to or not. But we kept from, we kept from doing, we were kept from doing that by the cities that were within a six-mile radius for their own benefit. Frankly, the shared revenue gets split with other counties that we don't see. Currently, we have 100,000 members here in our Santan Valley, and I know people don't want things to change, pretty much their taxes, but you know, it is changing. I can't believe how much has changed. Just driving down Ironwood and seeing all the new homes coming in, it is changing. So here we are at 100,000. What's it going to be like when we're at 200,000 and more? We need to have the right for people to vote. I'm glad that that's in process, and I think also that we need to have the tools that other municipalities have to do their business. We aren't, we don't even have a seat at the table when it comes to municipalities. We're just left out. We're not, we don't have those tools. For example, we don't have the ability to change our impact fees. We don't have the people, the resources to deal with businesses, with entertainment, with developments here that we would like to see. I don't want Santan Valley to be simply a place that you drive through to get somewhere else. Thank you.
Beverly Goldstein? Beverly? There you are.
Good morning, thank you. I'm Beverly Goldstein. I live in Queen Creek. Mr. Chairman, my own Supervisor Goodman, and other Supervisors. I came to speak on represencing on the report that Recorder Lewis provided to you on March 13th at a BOs meeting. District Two will be the largest impacted district if the represencing project goes forward. We now have 15 precincts in District Two, and it could go up to 27. PCRC District Two decided that since we were going to be so impacted, we would have an ad hoc committee which met, seven members of our PCs attended, and we provided a very comprehensive report to Recorder Lewis. We looked at the names of the precincts, the numbers, the boundaries, the number of voters in each precinct, and voting locations within the constructs of the ARS and the Constitution. And yesterday, we had an opportunity to make a report in person to Recorder Lewis and her committee, and we met for two hours, and it was an outstanding meeting, and the process seems to be moving forward. I, as District Two Chair for PCRC, am very happy about this effort ongoing, and I know the five of you look at it from dollars first, or not foremost, but on the political side, this is important because we work to reach voters, and the way District Two is structured right now is just so cumbersome. So expansion would help, and I report this as being the captain last year and the district chair this year. I have a request, and that is, please make sure that voter notification is extensive in '25 and '26 if the project is implemented on October 1st. Fund it sufficiently for voter education so voters know where they're going to vote. It's a very high priority to me, this project. I think it's going great. I feel like I have no problem giving input and receiving input back. We had a lot of interesting things come up as we unraveled the report yesterday, but the most important thing is, at the end of it all, we need our voters to know where to vote, so please keep that as a high priority, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have, but is there anybody else from the public that'd like to speak? Please come forth. And name and where you generally live?
I'm Noel Rec from Eloy. Our nation right now is in the midst of a constitutional crisis, but today, my remarks will be centered around excerpts from the Declaration of Independence. When in the course of human events it becomes necessary for the people to dissolve political bans, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they declare the causes which impel them to the separation. To do so, they didn't name the 27 causes by name, such as the Stamp Act or the Quartering Act. Instead, they described them so that others, particularly the French, could understand particularly exactly what they were. Continuing on, prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light or transient causes, but when a long train of abuses and usurpations, pursuing invariably the same object, evinces a design to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right and it is their duty to throw off such government. Now, 12 of the descriptions where one can discern the similarities of the despotic, cruel, destructive abuses and usurpations of King George with those of the wannabe king, the man proclaiming that he runs the country and the world, Donald Trump. He has refused his assent to laws as most wholesome and necessary for the public good. He has obstructed the administration of justice by refusing his assent to laws establishing judiciary powers. He has made judges dependent on his will alone. He has erected a multitude of new offices and sent hither swarms of officers to harass our people. He has affected to render the military independent of and superior to the civil power. He has combined with others to subject us to a jurisdiction forward into our constitution and unacknowledged by our laws, giving his assent to acts of pretended legislation. For cutting off our trade with all parts of the world, for imposing taxes on us without our consent, for depriving us in many cases of the benefits of trial by jury, for transporting us beyond seas to be tried for pretended offenses, for taking away our charters, abolishing our most valuable laws, and altering fundamentally the forms of our government. He has excited domestic insurrections amongst us. A prince whose character is thus marked by every act which may define a tyrant is unfit to be the ruler of a free people. And for the support of this declaration with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor. History is indeed repeating itself. Our lives, our fortunes, our sacred honor at risk. Once again, I implore you for the well-being of your constituents, for the protection of our unalienable rights, to counteract this madness in any way possible before we lose, as Benjamin Franklin warned, our democratic republic. May your consciences be clear. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on. We'll move to item number 17. We've already done 16, so we'll move into 17. Does have a public hearing component. Decision approval or disapproval of ordinance number 205, 2025, PZ 01624.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. Patrick Zaire-Roberts, Senior Planner here presenting case PZ 01624. This is a rezoning proposal presented by Melissa Richards from Arizona Quality RV and Boat Storage LLC. She's the landowner applicant and is requesting a rezoning of 2.84 acres from GR, General Rural Zone, to C3, General Commercial Zoning District, for development of her RV and Boat Storage facility. This property is located at Tax Parcel 10415030, and it's located approximately half a mile northwest of El Camio Viejo on US Highway 60, just south of Gold Canyon. This is a map showing the approximate location within the county. A vicinity map showing the local zoning districts in the RV park, Arizona RV Park across the street, or across the US 60. An aerial map depicting the site. And a zoning map indicating the surrounding zonings. To the northwest of the property is CB1, and to the southwest of the property is CI1 and CB2 zoning districts respectively. This is a preliminary site plan depicting the development of this RV Boat Storage Facility. There's been some revisions that the applicant has proposed over time, but ultimately, the surrounding units would be for enclosed RV storage. The central units would be for covered RV storage with some mini-stores along the south property line. This is an image looking north on the property. South onto the property. East. And west along US 60. Some items for board consideration. The submitted application and land use requests were for approval of a rezoning. If the applications are approved, the subject property will be rezoned from GR to C3 and allow for development of the RV Boat Storage business. The property is, has access to US 60 directly fronting the property as determined by, as is under consideration by ADOT, and the project adheres to the Comprehensive Plan Standards and identifies as a commercial service to local residents. The project was originally subject to a co-compliance case CC 001224, which has been closed as of January 14th, 2025, upon clearing of the site of all unpermitted operations. The project has potential to attract future local development and eliminates an incompatible existing zoning in the area. Staff has received no comments of opposition or support on the project, and on February 20th, the, following the public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the case with seven stipulations. At this point, staff presents the case with the seven stipulations for approval or denial. Does the board have any questions of staff?
Any questions of staff? You did? Oh, there we go.
So, yeah, this project got off to a bad start because they tried to do things without permits, so, including encroaching on ADOT's easement. So that's all been rectified, and all the stipulations have been met now.
At this point, we have stipulations in, in the proposed zoning that would require that ADOT authorization prior to any approvals going forward at the site plan review level. The site has been cleared per the conditions of the co-compliance case, and at this point, it's just requiring that final certification from ADOT to be able to proceed forward.
So even if we approve it now, it still may not happen until they meet ADOT's standards?
Correct.
Which they probably plan on doing, correct?
That, they, they're currently in conversations with ADOT to pursue that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this had.
Applicant is available as well to speak on the case.
No. Oh, okay, good. Does the applicant want to add anything to this presentation? See anybody coming forward, so.
They're available for any questions, but they have nothing else to add.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant? No? All right. Okay, this has a public hearing component to it, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Sir, anybody from the public that wants to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. The board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve item number 17 as presented with the seven stipulations.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, thank you. You need a break? Okay. I am going to take, we're going to take a five-minute break here because we've got some guys that are seeing yellow from their eyes, so we're going to take a little five-minute recess here. All right, everyone. Get back to order here. Recess is over. We're on item number 18. And do you want to close those doors back there? All that commotion on the... We don't need the background. Okay, number 18 is a discussion approval, disapproval of ordinance number 2025, PZ 01724, and ordinance approving PZ 017-24. And Laura Lee Wertz, Family Farm. Staff is going to present first, then the applicant will have a presentation and question, and then after that, I will open up the public comment period. Go ahead.
All right. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. My name's Kendall Riley, Title Planner, and I'm here to present to you case PZ-017-24 and PZ-PD-017-24, Valley Farms Energy Center.
And Chairman, if I may, before we get started, just for the record, we're going to be presenting items 18 and 19 together.
That's correct, thank you. 18 and 19 together. Thank you.
This is a request to rezone 160 acres from GR to I3 and a planned area development overlay request for the 160 acres with development standards to allow solar energy and best uses and restrict all other industrial uses. Location is in the Coolidge Valley Farms area, east of Highway 87, at the northwest corner of East Bartlett Road and North Clemens Road. Owner is Gregory and Laura Lee Wertz Family Trust. Applicant and agent is Ralph Pew with Pew and Lake. Here's a county map showing the approximate location marked by the red star. Here's a vicinity map showing the surrounding zoning and jurisdictions. So the brown portion is going to be city of Coolidge, and the gray area is going to be our portion, zoned general rule. Here's an aerial photo showing the surrounding uses of the land and site conditions. Project details are, is to provide 10 megawatts of PV solar, solar project with a battery energy storage system. Typical components with a solar field, PV modules, electric collection systems, site substation, the battery energy storage system and associated civil infrastructure, proposed Gentai with the Able-Turandoff 230 kilovolt transmission line. Site is currently being used for agriculture. There are some low-density residential surrounding the site, and it is flat topography throughout. The rezoning does match the Comprehensive Plan designation, green energy production, which was approved under case PZ-PA-005-22. This was the site plan that was provided for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Since upload into our agenda, applicant has reconfigured their site plan to show the best, more centrally located on the project, and the applicant's presentation should go into depth on that. So some items of consideration, the project does meet the green energy production designation under the previously approved case. The proposal is only a portion of what was approved under the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. An applicant is providing 100-foot setbacks surrounding the entire project. Some examples of site postings that we placed, we placed a total of eight surrounding the project. So we have had some updated information since the slides have been uploaded. We received two additional letters of opposition that were within the 300-foot boundary. According to our calculations, that will trigger the supermajority vote per ARS 11-814 by both area and number of owners. Since the upload, applicant has estimated that around 70 letters of support have been received, and then this includes for support of... I believe, I don't have my notes here in front of me, I'm sorry, we just came in this morning. Applicant should go into detail about those letters. And then we also received a letter of opposition from the city of Coolidge because the project is in the pathway of the north-south corridor. So there were some revisions made to the stipulations that were prevented at the plant, presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission, but those have been outlined in your staff report. Are there any questions for staff?
Any questions for staff?
I don't know if it's for staff or from the developer about, so it's, it's, this is... is, most of the ones that are brought to us are called solar projects, yet this is called a battery project, kind of. So it will have solar also, and the batteries will only store from the solar that it produces, right? Not from other fields.
I know there will be a battery energy storage system on-site. I don't know the energy capacity of that. Maybe the applicant can answer for.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to say, I think that might be more to the applicant.
Yeah.
And the applicant has some more expertise, people with them too, on more specific questions for each of you. Any other questions for staff? If not, applicant ready to produce or present? I promise that presents.
Almost good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you. My name is Ralph Pugh, and my office is in Mesa. It's a pleasure today to be here on behalf of Next Era Energy Resources and to say a few words on behalf of the property owner, the Wertz family. As we begin this morning, I'd like to just state a few facts that we're all clear on. There is indeed a supermajority vote required on this request today. How that happens, supervisors, is very interesting. So the statute defines what they call the zoning area as a 300-foot-wide swath of land that surrounds the property. Here we have a perfect quarter section of land, 160, right? And so what really we have here today is roughly, in round numbers, 25% of the property owners and 25% of the land within that 300-feet swath around the property have objected. That objection causes the three-quarter vote required to approve this case. What it doesn't address is what's left. 75% of the property owners around the property either don't oppose or have written a letter in favor. And one of those letters comes from Monty Nevett, who owns 45% of the land around this site, with a strong recommendation for approval. So while we are in that majority vote requirement, the requirement is not 50-50, it's not a balance, it's just the statute says 20%, and there is that. But we just want you to know, there's plenty more people around the property who are totally supportive or who do not object. Just another brief thought, how did we get here today? Just a quick memory lane passage here. This all started in '22, when Next Era Energy filed, on behalf of various property owners, a comprehensive plan amendment. Took months and months for that to be processed. Eventually, that comp plan amendment comes to this board. At the time, Supervisor Vitello was not a member of the board. That was because it was in '23. It was in this room where it occurred. It was this very room. I happened to be there that day on a separate case, unrelated to the project. And what happened in that room, and will happen here today, I'm sure, will hear every objection conceivable to the solar industry and to these types of uses, as necessary as they are. But the point of it is, on that day in January 2023, the Board of Supervisors, four of you who were there, listened to all that. You heard it, you understood it, and at that time, you made a decision to change the comp plan and designate this 160 and some surrounding acreage for green energy production. So then what happens? That happens in early '23. For the next year or so, the property owner and Next Era works with providers of energy, Salt River Project in particular, and others, to talk to them about it. It takes time to put it together, so in reliance upon the comp plan decision, they move forward. And they come forward today with a zoning case that is consistent with the comp plan that was approved in '23. And that's how it should happen. That's really the flow of land use issues. You start with the comp plan that gives a vision for zoning. You then zone the property, you then put a PAD on it generally in Pinell County, then you submit to the staff a site plan, they review it, and then you move forward with building permits. So we're right in the middle of that process, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, on a case that has been talked about and has been approved prior by this board. Let me just say something on behalf of the Wertz family too, and then we'll move on to a couple of points. Let's remember this, the Wertz family came here in 1920. They've been here a century, and they've been farmers, they've been innovative in cotton farming, they're part of the community. One of their family members served as the mayor of Coolidge for eight years. We're not talking about a group of people who come late to Pinell County. They are stalwarts here in this community, and I think we'll probably hear from Mr. Wertz at the end of this, hearing this morning. So anyway, that's a brief introduction. We urge you to think about that as, with respect to them. Also today with us, we have several members of the staff from Next Era. I can introduce them, but what will happen, I think, is if you have a question that needs a technical answer from one of them, we'll call them then at that, at that time. So we all know Next Era, and we know their experience here. Let me just highlight for you, they are based in Juneau, Florida, but basically, they've become an Arizona company too. They have multiple wind and solar projects here. They, they produce and they, they, they protect roughly 20% of the nation's battery storage of energy. So think of that number and think of their expertise in the area. They've gotten to be involved in the community to a great extent. They've provided a fire truck to the South Florence Fire District. They work with the school district in Coolidge and have provided help to them. They're always involved in the food pantry in the Maricopa area. So they're here, and they intend to stay here and to do good things here. So with respect to notice, with respect to this case, sometimes we get criticized for that. It's always a tough road to walk to make sure you provide the right notice. So in this case, the proper notice was given for a neighborhood meeting, as required by the county. Then realizing that that didn't generate as much interest as it could have, we then went beyond that and sent notices a half-mile around the property and, and provided those people with phone numbers and access to people at Next Era to talk to about the project. So we have reached out, we have talked to the community, and certainly the property owners around us, they know all about it. We're here today to take action on two things. One is to rezone the property from general rural to the I3 industrial, and two, to overlay a planned area development on the property. Why do we do that? Why do we do that in Pinell County? Why does almost every case have a PAD? It's because it's a very effective tool to manage the project and require the developer to build what the developer shows in the preliminary development plan at the hearings. That's why you use a PAD, and you also prohibit certain uses that you may not want in a district. So that's what we're doing today. That's the request in front of you, is to approve the zoning, approve the PAD, so that this particular industrial-scale solar facility can be built in an area where the comp plan specifically allows it. So as we look at the site, here's a good drawing, and, and thanks to Kendall and, and to Harvey Kraus for their time and effort they spent as the staff members on this case, and her visuals and exhibits were very clear. This one demonstrates where this property is. It's roughly four miles from the heart of Coolidge, and you can see the distances and where it's located. It's west of the municipal airport. We'll talk about this as it comes to the north-south corridor and why that's so important here in just a minute. This is the revised site plan that the staff member Kendall talked about, and, and for your information, the best area in this 160 acres is roughly 20 acres. So it's 12.5% of the entire site for best storage. If you, as the supervisors, prefer that, that best area be even moved to a more central location or further south, we have that flexibility, and we can do that, and would be happy to follow your direction on that. The interesting thing here too, if you look at the bottom of the site on Bartlett Road, there's 170-foot-wide easement there for the benefit of Salt River Project, that's the Abel Randolph 230 KV transmission line. This is why this site's here, this is why the supervisors approved it in '23 for this use, because the Abel Randolph line is there. Salt River Project owns a switchyard there that they're working on, and it's the ideal spot for this type of use. So in zoning cases in Pinell County, the staff always asks you several questions. They say the Board of Supervisors should address these questions. Let's take them one at a time. Why is this project needed at this location at this time? Well, we've talked about it. One, the comprehensive plan designates this 160 as green energy. That's number one. Number two, it's adjacent to the SRP and other infrastructure of the Abel Moody, of the Abel Randolph line, I should say. There also is minimal residential adjacencies here. We have very few neighbors that are around us, and we have met with ADOT regarding the corridor. Now, look, the north-south corridor is critical to all of us, critical to Pinell County, but the truth of the matter is, those things take decades to evolve and to decide. We have been active with ADOT. I know Coolidge continues to say, "We're in the way of the north-south freeway." We're not in the way of the freeway because the freeway location hasn't been determined yet. There's a wide swath of land that ADOT's looking at. First, they have to have funding for the study and funding to build it, right? But that's a wide swath. They might bring it down to a half-mile, then it even gets further refined. So for right now, we have been involved in those studies. ADOT asked us specifically to give them our plans so that they could use that in their future planning. So we are not avoiding the topic of the 505, as we call it, the north-south connector. We know it's important. We can adjust our site plans a bit if we had to, to dedicate land for that. So I'm on the record, and Next Era's on the record here today, say we are not an obstructionist to the north-south corridor. You'll probably hear that we are a little bit later, but I'm to tell you, we're not. We're agreeable to helping out and to designing it accordingly. Here's even a more interesting question. So for our good friends at Coolidge, who we work with and we deal with all the time, let's just please take a look at the general plan that was adopted in Coolidge in November and ratified by the citizens. You see the red dot there? That's the Valley Farms project. That's in that area that's green, I call it green, in the Coolidge general plan. If you'll take a look over there at the definition of that, it says, "There are no development timelines predicted within this growth area or the outer growth area." All right? So if you take a step into the blue, they then predict a 10- to 20-year timeframe for the area in blue to build. So given where this site is, as far away from the center of the city, it's very likely that the solar use could be built, used, finished, decommissioned by the time development occurs out there. Nothing is imminent there, and this is a perfect interim use. Why is it necessary at this time? It's because we now have a contract with Salt River Project to provide that energy. It also meets the needs of an ever-growing population. We receive, many of you should have received last night a letter from Craig McFarland of the Pinell Partnership. In part, he says, "We need energy to power homes and facilities, and affordable clean energy solutions like solar power and battery storage must be a part of the mix." That's a strong statement from our friends at the Pinell Partnership. Here's some comments from LG. Talk about businesses coming here, we all appreciate that. They sent a letter last night also, and they listed three reasons. One, to keep pace with other states, Arizona businesses are counting, counting on renewable energy. Number two, Arizona ranks fifth in the country as, for producing solar energy. Let's keep it up. And number three, we should look to add new energy and storage systems into the mix. What more profound statement could come from LG and someone like them with the demands that they have for energy? How will this impact surrounding property owners? Well, you've noticed already, one small group, 25%, objects to the use, the much larger group doesn't. It's a passive use, it's quiet, it's safe. In that regard, if you have questions about fire, I'm not the one to answer them, Josh Adams is here, he knows all about that on behalf of Next Era, so if you do have fire questions, please let us know. We were asked about decommissioning the other day at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on a different case, and we can talk about that. We think frankly, the best tool for decommissioning that's out there today in this area is the ordinance adopted by Eloy, the City of Eloy. They have a great plan, they require certain things, follow-up within so many years, engineer certificates, bonds, all kinds of things are included in that. Here in Pinell County, typically, the decommissioning plan comes at the time of site plan, not at this stage. So when the site plan is produced, then a decommissioning plan is presented, and we will cooperate in that. We have folks here that can talk about that in greater detail if you'd like. This all has to do with compliance with fire safety requirements, and again, let me just say that we've undergone all the tests and all the requirements. We comply with all the fire codes that are applicable. Josh is here, he can speak to them if you really have questions about that, or about their RAC, which is the Renewable Operations Control Center that manages all of their facilities. So we've talked about decommissioning. You know, one of the things that gets talked about here too, and everybody has different views of it, it's odd to me that we all do, we should know what the tax benefits are. And I know sometimes when we, as the development industry, uses the word tax, people turn their brains off for a minute and say, "Oh, I've heard all of that." Let me just rephrase it as simple as we can. Jim Rounds of Rounds Consulting and Luis from his company have prepared an analysis of this, and our team members from Next Era met with the Pinell County assessor staff to discuss this very issue. What is it about the money and the taxes? The truth of the matter is, the best way to describe it without using dollars is to say, one year's worth of taxable income, just real estate, not personal property and not sales tax, just real estate, it would take about 30 years for the county to gain that much income from one year of having a solar use on that site. That would give you some proportionality and some feeling for the magnitude that we're talking about here. And hopefully, at some point, we can come to an agreement on taxes. You think it would be easy to do, and maybe Luis can talk about that here today. And this is an exhibit that demonstrates what I just said. How does it advance the comprehensive plan of the county? It, it met the requirements of the comprehensive plan, or you would not have voted to amend the comp plan two years ago. It fit all the criteria, the same facts exist today, and we urge you to approve the zoning case that's consistent with that comp plan. Really love the statement by Monty Nevett here, he owns most of the land around the property. "I'm writing to express my strong support for the Valley Farms Energy Center, which will bring significant benefits of future economic development to Pinell County. This project is vital to our community, I urge you to support." There's a good statement from Lucid Motors about it. "The United Way compliments Next Era again for their commitment to Pinell County and their contributions." So, members of the commission, we appreciate your time. As supervisors, we appreciate your listening to us today. We truly feel that the questions about solar and its uses have been asked and answered on this case. My guess is, we're going to hear from a lot of people, and you could just turn on the tape recorder, and it was here in this room two years ago. And its question was decided, and we're now moving forward with the next step in the process. So we urge you to vote to approve the zoning case and the PAD, and this project can move forward. Be happy to answer any questions you have, or introduce you to the right person who can have the answer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that. Any questions of the applicant?
I'd like to do the same.
Okay. No questions from the board?
My questions were answered in that schematic there.
Okay.
We'll be available. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I'm going to open the public hearing comment. I have 14, 15, so the three-minute rule is going to be, would be over an hour, time we got done with processing that. Just make it short and sweet, people, I mean, and if somebody says the same thing over and over and over again, that doesn't advance the ball. But be conscious of the time of everybody in the room. I know somebody has a tight schedule, and this is Joseph Trensko. I have you first to, to speak, because I know you have another obligation, so I'll allow you to come up first.
Okay, thank you, Chairman, Supervisors. I'm representing regional fire and rescue. We're the Emergents. We're the emergency responder that would be responding to the site. It's something that we've spent a lot of time on addressing. I recently went to an ATF class specifically on lithium battery storage, trying to learn about it. I also just got back from Indianapolis at the Fire Department Instructors Conference, where we also are studying this. It's something that we're trying to keep up with on the emerging topic. I know some people had expressed concerns about things like the surprise fire in the past. It's something that they've learned a lot from. NextEra has been an excellent partner, keeping us in the loop during the entire time throughout the planning process, answering all of our questions. We've gotten to see both the planning and do other site tours of established places. And we're confident that we have a, they have a good plan and that the practices that they've established reflect the best practices available in the industry and can do it safely. So from the, from the Fire Department aspect, we're very comfortable with the project and look forward to working with them in the future.
Thank you. Lynda Brady.
Good afternoon, Chairman Miller and members of the board. I'm Lynda Brady, here representing SRP and speaking in support of the NextEra Battery Storage Project, from which SRP plans to purchase power from. SRP is a not-for-profit company, and we serve power to 1 million customers, both in Maricopa and Pinal Counties. In Pinal County, there's three, there's portions of three supervisor districts for which we provide power, all which are growing a lot, as you well know. But before progressing, I want to clear up a common myth. And we hear a lot that the power that SRP generates or purchases is sold to California. That is simply not true. All the power we generate and purchase is for our local customers here. And if by chance we do have excess power, we, that's the only time we will enter the wholesale market, and we don't profit off that. We reinvest it back into the grid to make it even better and to keep costs lower for our customers. Ideally, we could put that excess power into batteries, and that's why batteries are vital. They can store power when energy demand is low, and then we can release it when it's high. And that's very cost-effective and, again, keeping costs low for our customers. As SRP looks for new technologies and new ways to generate power, we're not just looking in Pinal County. We have new projects in Maricopa County. We're looking all over the state, and it's a variety of technologies with batteries just being one. Exploring new technologies is just one piece of the puzzle. The other is working with the other utilities. In Arizona, utilities often buy and sell power to one another. That's the case for SRP and ED2, one of your local utilities that serves power to Coolidge, Casa Grande, and Florence. Right now, SRP is partnering with ED2 on a power cell agreement so that we can help meet their growing energy needs locally as well. It doesn't matter who owns the generation, the wires. It's that all the utilities have to work together to balance that delicate supply and demand game. So in closing, the state needs more energy. This is not a future issue. It's something we need to start addressing now. SRP sources power for local customers. It's not to sell to other states. And the NextEra Battery Project is crucial to ensuring sufficient power to serve customers and to keep our grid reliable as it has been. So we encourage you to approve this project. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Just real quick, housekeeping. Let's not ask questions of the speakers and just write them all down, and then we'll come back to questions after we get through the public comment period. Next up is Luis Cordova.
Members of the board. Chairman, appreciate the opportunity to speak this afternoon. My name is Luis Cordova. I'm here on behalf of Rounds Consulting Group. Our firm has worked with the county for many, many years independently analyzing economic, the economic impact of dozens of projects. So our firm conducted an impact analysis of the Valley Farms Project, specifically projecting the potential property tax revenues from the project, which I think you should all have a copy of that report. So I won't get into any specifics today, but the project has the potential to generate millions of dollars to support essential services like roads, public safety, and more. It's about nearly half a million dollars a year, at little to no cost to residents. In fact, the revenue could be used to lower the property tax, property taxes for residents. And so just in closing, approving the project avoids leaving millions of dollars, about 30 years' worth on the table. And not only that, but it helps support the county's growing advanced manufacturing industry. Thank you.
Jim, is it Shof, S-H-O-A-F? Shof?
Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jim Shof. I'm the founder of Maricopa Pantry, and I am one of the companies that they have taken on. They've been down to the food bank and helped us. And I'm a little bit tenacious. I dug into what they're doing because I wasn't sure whether I wanted solar in our area or not, where you know we're growing like crazy down there. So I started investigating them, and so did my, the president of my company, Mike Connolly. And what we found out through our investigations, just checking into their company, I am for it because these lithium iron phosphorus batteries, iron phosphate batteries, they won't promote a fire. As a matter of fact, if there is an electrical fire in the area where they're at, when these batteries get hot enough, they will actually put out the fire the way they're set up, which is very beneficial, the way I see things. So I'm here as just a citizen to promote them and tell you that I think we should do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil Garthright?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Phil Garthright. I'm the senior planner for the city of Coolidge. Just going to basically reading to the record some of the stuff that was presented or what we had shared at the Planning and Zoning Commission. But I just wanted to note that the map that had been shared from our general plan is our growth area. And what that is really to do is to estimate the land use relative to the population and the cost of things as they might come into being from water sewer lines. It's not to say that that couldn't have development out there. For example, going from our downtown core in the opposite direction is a community called Martin Valley. That is the first of four different phases. In fact, actually, the developers coming back and talking to us about the next phases for the several hundred communities, or, excuse me, the several hundred homes that are already out there. Also to bear, we also have the large project of Sandia with Assured Water, also about the same direction, going a little further towards the highway up there, towards Signal Peak. So it's not to say that that development could not happen out there. I've worked in Western Air Power, First Solar. I've got a little bit of experience, probably not as much as these folks. Just like to bullet point three sides of this, of the city surrounded by either being directly adjacent to it or diagonal. It's not within our solar overlay. It doesn't conform to our November general plan approved by the voters in 2024. Its land use designation is business commerce. That's C1, C2, I1, not an I2, not an I3. And to the west of it is an urban neighborhood designation, which is our widest range of R1 through 6, C1, C2 maybe, but generally would not be adjacent to an I3 designation. Stated back then, no accommodation for the north-south freeway. The applicant has mentioned that here. They've also approached us recently and talked to us about it. But with the Phase 1 environmental, would just like to say that it seems like the alignment is very much in play. We opposed the general land use change for the county in 2024 when it was hosted at the Use Center. Our city manager was there to also spearhead that effort. And just call out one other economic aspect. Once again, noting that development can occur anywhere as long as the utilities and the land speculation, I guess, are present. This is halfway between the airport, which now employs 100 jobs directly that previously had had none a decade ago. It is every hope that some of the land uses around this area will develop into other businesses that support the operations on the airport or even supplement it, also potential live working situations. So a sign for, I understand the location choice relative to what has been shared, but there is every opportunity for this thing to develop in the ways that we've called out, which are not consistent with our general plan. So, thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Neely.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Board members. My name is Debbie Neely, and I am a Coolidge resident. I am here today on behalf of myself and the residents of Coolidge, asking that you deny this agenda item and any agenda item that comes to you in the future that's just like it. The primary reason that I feel this way and that the Coolidge citizens that we have organized with feel this way is a public safety issue. You know, with all the information that's available to all of us is at the tip of our fingers on a daily basis, it doesn't take a lot of effort for us to just Google what these type of facilities have, what type of impact and public safety these types of facilities have had upon, across the world, in our nation, in Chandler, in Sunrise. When the battery storage unit facility caught fire in Sunrise, there were serious injuries to the first responders, and the people within a five-mile radius of that facility were mandated to be evacuated. Should the same type of situation occur at this location that is on the agenda today? That would involve evacuation of at least the entire town of Randolph and Coolidge. We saw on the map, this facility is four miles from Coolidge, downtown Coolidge. So you could probably use the narrative, well, that wouldn't include all of Coolidge. So what, what does the city do? What do the citizens do when that situation occurs? The wind blowing these toxins within a five-mile radius go to Kennelworth Road. So if you live south of Kennelworth Road, you must evacuate. If you live across the street, on the north side of Kennelworth Road, you're safe. You can shelter in place. The, the wind will stop there, citizens, because it doesn't carry toxins any further than that roadway. That's just ludicrous to expect people to, to buy into that and feel safe. The other thing that this leads into is a second issue, which is private property rights. You're going to hear about this. You've heard about it before. I understand that. But I am also asking you, what about the private property rights of the thousands of people that I just identified to you? Those are impacted as well. It's interesting, and it's a challenge. I get it. We all, how are we going to provide energy for this wonderfully growing state of ours? I'm just like everybody else. I walk in a room, I flip a switch. I expect those lights to come on. I turn on a faucet. I want water. I don't want to have to live through any blackouts or anything like that. But I will share with you, in my opinion, this is not a Pinal County problem. It is an APS and SRP problem. They have intentionally created themselves as the leader for energy.
Thank you. Scott Riggins?
I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for relying me to be in front of you and express my opinions concerning this case today. Interesting in the evaluation of this case today is events that have just occurred and will help in the review of this case. Today, actually, not so interesting for those that are involved in what happened. They actually are involved in a catastrophe. But we have the ability to use time and thought to think our way through this. Wall Street Journal, today, "How the Lights Went Out in Spain." "Life Changed for Spaniards at Noon on Monday, When the Sun at Its Peak, The Country's Largely Solar-Powered Electrical Grid Shut Down." "The government had promised to phase out reliable nuclear power plants with many years of varying service life and replace them with renewable power. As in Germany, this promise is now the Spanish politician's nightmare." A different, politically motivated journal, the New York Times, begins with, "How Spain's Success in Renewable Energy May Have Left It Vulnerable." "Spain's Power Company proudly declared on April 16 that enough power had been generated to cover the entire demand for the Iberian Peninsula. Less than two weeks later, Spain and Portugal experienced a total 18-hour blackout that disrupted daily life. 'This disruption serves as a clear warning,' wrote Prashika Ramdas, an analyst at Reistad Energy, a consulting firm. 'Future grid failures could have even more severe consequences.' She said, 'When you have more renewables on the grid, then your grid is more sensitive for these kinds of disturbances. Real-world experience in system operation can foster a bright illumination of veracity.'" An interesting aspect of the case that we are looking at today is that if it was moved but a small distance in either of any four directions, you wouldn't be hearing it. Because if it was in the Coolidge jurisdiction, this case wouldn't be heard. They wouldn't have it done. There's a small peninsula of county land here that serves for this to be something that can be heard in Pinal County. Coolidge wouldn't have it, not so much the other municipal jurisdictions as well. Pretty much just the county is still doing these kind of things. City of Coolidge wrote a formal letter saying how this didn't fit into their plans, didn't work into the aspects of the Pinal Corridor Freeway. Good enough. And thank you, and thank you again for the opportunity. It seemed a little short.
What? He lives in Coolidge. He lives between Coolidge and Florence. Brenda Hiscok? No, no, it doesn't work that way. You don't donate.
Thank you all again. Mr. Chairman, Board members, Brenda Hiscok's from Coolidge. Thank you for letting us come before you today. We come bloody-nosed and bandaged. That's how important you guys are. Mine's very brief. This social experiment called utility-grade solar farming, it isn't working out like they told us it would. They tell us these things are safe. This developer has reached out to residents just within the last two weeks, again, telling people, "Bess are perfectly safe." But in the last planning and zoning meeting, they stated, when asked, "What do you do in case of a fire?" "We let them burn, and we tell everybody to get away." They said that. In the event of fire, whether it means panels or bess, multiple toxins are released into our lives on every level. As we're seeing playing out in real time in Monterey Bay, California, collections at the Monterey Bay Research Lab have measured 25 metric tons of heavy metals deposited after the fire in solar and water samples. Monterey Bay is home to the Pacific Otter Rehabilitation Facility, Monterey Bay, and vast agricultural farms. Our county has approved and allowed to be built millions of dollars of utility solar investment. Yet, our electric bills have not gone down. Our electric bills have gone up, way up. Residents in Florence described 150% increases in having to choose between paying for groceries, medication, or paying the electric bill. To date, our local community cities have received zero tax dollars from the utility solar development since the invasion of utility solar into our farming communities, and batteries are not taxed according to Arizona statute. We just keep losing farms and jobs. It's time to send these developers packing. In fact, when Valley Farms Solar was up before you guys... In fact, when Valley Farms Solar was up before you guys in 2021, that was Valley Farms Solar, it was SRP, it was written as a done deal. Nextera walked off of it. You know why? They said, "It's obvious the community doesn't support us and we want to be friends to the community. We're going to move further out." Please deny this zone change. In doing so, you will assure future development for this property, which will be better. The landowners will make more money and you will be ensuring future development. That's going to be your legacy, is a better future for this land. Thank you for your time.
Noah Hiscock.
Thank you, gentlemen, for hearing me. I had some questions about solar and bess and their impact on rural communities and farmland. Questions, number one, are they safe where people live or work? They're much safer than they used to be. They don't catch on fire too often anymore. Cons, they still do catch on fire. When they do, communities must evacuate, poisonous gases. They can't be put out. Nextera has, has assured people and, and said, "Please, if they catch on fire, don't try to treat them. Just go. It's, it's unsafe." It's called thermal runaway. How do people that you represent feel about utility-grade solar, particularly bess replacing farmland? People living within the higher-density portions of cities have mixed opinions and are generally opposed to utility-grade solar and bess replacing farmland, but they're in support of green energy, so long as they don't have to live next to it. Rural residents, on the other hand, unanimously vigorously oppose utility-grade solar replacing farmland, and to place batteries on farmland, to me, is just unthinkable. Property rights are very important. How does utility-grade solar affect, and bess particularly, batteries affect land values? Well, the people that are buying and selling are all in favor of it, but anybody adjacent to them is opposed to it. It lowers the value of their property. So there are, and I'm only a couple of miles from this, and I can see where it would definitely lower my, my values of my farmland. Lastly, how does the installation of utility-grade solar and batteries affect Pinellas County, especially its tax base and tax base of neighboring cities? Tax revenues for Pinellas County will increase for a period of 10 years when converting farmland to utility-grade solar. The valuation of utility-grade solar is much higher than the value of farmland. The batteries, although quite expensive, do not increase the property tax valuation because they can't be taxed by Arizona state law. Cons, following the installation of utility-grade solar, the tax base for neighboring rural cities declines rapidly. The loss of the tax base to those cities will be felt immediately due to the loss of revenue from their agricultural base. Considerable, the net, the net job loss will be considerable. Decline in sales, tractors, equipment, fertilizer, chemicals, vehicles, groceries, restaurants, rentals, fuel, homes, et cetera, et cetera. Job losses will affect every business, including schools. Property tax base for Pinellas. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Thiem.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Thiem. Thank you for the opportunity to, that's okay, to share some of my personal concerns about this project. As a citizen of Coolidge, I live here. Currently, there are two. This will be the third battery storage facility within five miles of where we live. We have horses and other livestock, highly valuable animals that we breed and compete and rodeo on and stuff like that. If something happens, we're going to be in trouble here. You know, they cannot guarantee that there will not be a catastrophic failure. This current project is also within one mile of the San Carlos, their lateral canal, and they're currently fixing to widen that. It should be done by November because they're running it right behind my property. Also, ADOT does have plans of where they want to put the freeway, because they have contacted me multiple times wanting to come onto our property to do impact studies. So they're very well aware of where they want to put their, their future freeway. And lastly, all of these people sitting here with these buttons on and stuff like that, they're used car salesmen. They're going to tell you what you want to hear. They're going to put lipstick on the pig. They're going to make it sound really good. They don't live here. They're all on payroll right now. They're paid to be here by the companies that they work for. We live in the community. These people do not bring anything to the community, and what they say they bring, I'd like to see receipts on what they say they bring. Have they really, you know, we, they say, "We project, we're going to bring this to the community. We project you're going to get this much tax dollars and stuff." Well, you can project as much as you want, but until it actually happens, it's just another sales tactic. And so I would ask that you guys really dig deep of what you want to leave as far as a legacy to Pinellas County and say, "Is this something we want? Or do we want something that will better the lives of the people that live in this community?" So I ask you to think about that, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kirk McCarville.
Kirk McCarville, Pinellas County manager for the Land Advisors Organization. I've been working with the Wertz family for about four years on this project. I'm not on anybody's payroll. I've, I've, I've looked very carefully at the difference between utility-scale solar and agriculture. My degree's in agriculture. I've been selling farmland for 44 years. In the San Carlos district, which is where we are, there's 50,000 acres of irrigated farmland. There's enough, the, the allocation from San Carlos Lake right now is .68 acres. So that 50,000 acres is enough water to farm 8,500 acres. That's it. Greg has 160 acres, he can farm 27 acres. So how do we have agriculture at this scale when there's no water? So the Federal Risk Management Agency has declared a drought and they offer assistance to the farmers called preventive planning, which means you get paid not to farm. There's nothing wrong with that because the farmers didn't cause the drought, but that's an unsustainable economic model. And with that, if the, if this preventive planning goes away, the bankruptcies start tomorrow. The other thing about farming is their property taxes are frozen at $500 an acre. They don't really pay any property taxes. They don't pay sales taxes on their equipment. They don't pay sales taxes on their fuel. The, the large employment base they used to have has gone away with mechanization. And so when you care, when you compare the economies of that business versus this business, we should be seizing these opportunities to move into this new economy, to generate these kinds of taxable revenues, most of which go to our schools. And we, our, our grid is at max. Our, our, the industry, we're talking industries now that say above 25 megawatts. Call me in 10 years. That's already the case. So we have an energy shortage. We have an opportunity to create a lot of tax revenue for your, for your constituents. We have, we're, we're subsidizing a dying industry and it's, it's going, it, it needs to shrink. There's way more farmland than there is water. There's probably 60% more farmland than there is water. Let's shrink it intelligently, let's shrink it in a right way by growing business opportunities for everybody and tax relief for your constituents.
Thank you. Andy Tobin.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to come see you. Not that we don't know each other a little bit. So listen, I, I just want to appreciate Pinellas County. It's 150 years. I was Speaker of the House when Arizona was only 100 years. So give some context to that. And to share with you, from another county whose family is here, whose businesses have been here occasionally, that you are the leaders in rural Arizona. We can go down the list and I can look at every one of you on the, on the board here and you know what I'm talking about, whether it be water, transportation, whether it be manufacturing, safety, security, whether it be our forests, now it's our energy grid. And I think you know, most of you know that I, I stood up to, let's not knock down the hydrogen generating station until we know where we're going. Remember? And it was all about what, what's moving ahead, but the technology wasn't there. The technology now exists. Moving ahead, Arizona's future of growth and manufacturing, which you're hearing today and all the trains I watch coming up from Morana, moving, moving product line in from international sources, those are not going to stop. They're going to increase. We are now, this is the avenue. This is the gateway to the Americas. Our children, our security, our student body, all our jobs are going to rely on decisions that we're making in this local community now for infrastructure. Big home runs here in Pinellas County. What did we do with our roads and how did they get built? And now we're looking at what's the other infrastructure we're, we're working on. It's water and it's the energy to move water and energy to move vehicles and energy to move produce. This is all coming to a head and we are right in the middle of a great opportunity for success as you can lead in energy production in Arizona. Rural counties look to you specifically for your great leadership. And I will share, and I know you know I spent time on the, on the ACC here in Arizona too. The Board of Supervisors right here has been able to set the pace. This pace has begun in Arizona. The, the growth here, I mean, you've tripled the growth numbers from Yavapai County, but think about what's now going on in Western America. I represent Western Way, I'm all over the country. I'll be back in Washington on Monday. The key here has always been leadership. At the end of the day, it's always been property rights, leadership. How do we get there? How do we do it affordably and safely? And I'm here to tell you that that is the next future. Nuclear is coming. We're not quite there yet. I'm telling you, it's going to be here, but this product line and this opportunity to keep Arizona growing is of significant value to us. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, members of the committee.
Thank you. Bobby Wertz.
Mr. Chairman, Board Supervisors, thank you for having me. My name is Bobby Wertz. I am the son of Greg and Laura Lee Wertz, and I am an advisor at the Land Advisors Organization. I'm here to talk about property values surrounding battery storage sites as that has been a concern that has been raised. I hope you were able to review the data that I sent over last week, where I found three commercial-grade battery storage sites in three different municipalities, one being in Gilbert, one being in Avondale, the other being in Glendale. I took a one-mile radius surrounding each battery storage site and looked at every land comp and home sale over the last three years. There are over 1,500 transactions that has happened over the last three years. Purchases by publicly traded home builders, names such as Lennar, Richmond Homes, Meritage Homes. We also have data centers. We have industrial, we have commercial sites. The data suggest, strongly suggest, that values do not, are not discounted due to these battery sites. This is all within one-mile radiuses of these facilities. So that, I don't think that should be a concern regarding what happens to the neighboring areas if you're worried about property values. I also want to talk briefly about the growth of Coolidge. Coolidge is well-positioned to capture growth west of the 87. If you look at where there's, where their sewer facilities are and their existing water facilities are, growth is going to go where there's infrastructure and where there's water. West of Coolidge, west of 87, there's 4,688 acres with a certificate of assured water supply. That's water today that they could tap into. If you put 3.5 units per acre, that's 17,000 units available today within proximity of infrastructure. Now, if you look at 2024, Coolidge did 236 permits. Economics were not as great. Let's go back to 2022, much more favorable time. 416, 419 permits were pulled in 2022. That's 40 years of inventory sitting west of Coolidge. There's an additional 240 acres that the city of Coolidge owns that is, has sewer water and is planned for industrial. If you look east, it is very reasonable to say that there is nothing going to happen in 20 to 40 years. There is not infrastructure and there's very little water to be had. So this is, this is a great opportunity for something to happen east of Coolidge. And when the day does come, we do know by the data that land is not discounted due to battery storage. Thank you for your time.
Taber Lewis.
Hi. Good afternoon, Supervisors. Thank you for your time and commitment to hearing us all out today. My name is Taber Lewis. I grew up in Coolidge in Florence and I'm a property owner here in Florence. I'm not paid to be here, but I'm here today to express my support for the Valley Farms Energy Center project. Just for a broader perspective, as someone who grew up here, I believe that myself and local youth face limited opportunities for higher employment and for growth and community engagement. The lack of opportunity has caused valued individuals to move to neighboring cities and develop, rather than developing their roots here and using their talents here and growing our culture and our businesses here. So I believe in many ways this project has the potential to address those disparities by bringing in economic growth, resources, and opportunities for our community to lead and benefit. And I believe it's our opportunity, our duty to seize these opportunities in moments like this because they don't come around very often for small towns like ours. So I encourage you all to recognize this and the potential that we have here, and I thank you for your time.
Michael Tucker.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Tucker. I'm a lifelong resident of Pinellas County, born here in Florence. I'm currently facilities manager of Stinger Bridge and Iron. I'm here today to support the project and, and hope that you will see the benefits of this project for the homeowners and taxpayers of this county and vote to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie Palmer.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Bonnie Palmer. My address is 610 West Central Avenue in Coolidge. I've been a resident since 1969, when I came to teach at the college. I'm here today personally, but also as a member of the Coolidge Rotary Club. And I just want to say that we've heard a lot today about solar, plus, minus. I'm here today probably as a character witness for Nextera because I've spent my life working with underserved populations. And if you know Rotarians, we, we are an organization that serves above self and we seek out things that we can do to help and we don't really sing too much about it. Nextera, when they first came to the community several years ago, found us and they said, "What's going on? How can we help?" And they've supported us with funds ever since. To us, that's a big deal because we only have about 10 members. They've helped us with the Dolly Pardon Imagination Library. They've helped us with our Hope Women's Center. They've helped us with our scholarships. They've helped us with our Rotary Youth Leadership Programs. They've helped us with our homeless projects. And they don't, they don't even want their name attached to it. I know they've given hundreds of thousands of dollars to the schools, to the libraries and what have you. Not, not that much to us, but even so, I don't hear from those other places that have gotten a lot of money. So I wanted to be here today to tell you, as a former 12-year member of the Coolidge City Council, we always look for community partners that were going to invest in our citizens, in our community, that to play a role with our people. And I just want to say that if you're looking for a community partner to do that, please consider Nextera. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Lee Wertz. Laura Lee? Is she here? There she is.
Thank you, gentlemen, for listening to us today. My name is Laura Lee Wertz and I don't have anything prepared. I just want to say that, as it was mentioned- I just want to say that, as was mentioned, Greg is a farmer and he loves it. Fourth generation. And I mean, he's giddy from when he plants it to when it emerges. And for him not to be able to farm the land that he owns because we don't have the water, nor will we ever get any more water because it's always going to go to municipalities. But as Bobby said, all the infrastructure is going to the west. It makes so much sense. Eloy, Coolidge, all the industries going into the south and the north. They have the railroad. It's industrial area. Coolidge is going to benefit the students and all the other citizens. There's a lot of what-ifs. What if the corridor, the north-south corridor goes back and forth? But that can be moved. If it needs to be moved. It may not even, that may not be where ADA wants to put it. It just seems the benefits today for the citizens of Coolidge, Eloy, and Arizona. I'll give you one little example. Gilbert, during our very hot summer, they had a blackout. And my daughter lives in Gilbert. Everybody around her lost power for two days. But they had three Tesla batteries on their solar system at their house. They had air conditioning. They didn't lose anything in their freezers or their refrigerator. And they just went on like a normal life. Their battery systems, they need them. We have this AI, all the power that AI is going to need and is already taking. And that's an avalanche. We're not going to ever be able to stop with this AI, what they are going to, what they're going to need. But like I said, it's not prepared. And I, of course, I would like it approved personally. But I think there's so many benefits for hundreds of thousands of other people, not only for right now, immediately, but in the future, growth of the towns, Coolidge and Eloy and other supporting towns. Thank you.
Greg Wertz.
Greg Wertz, one of the landowners. I don't know if I can top that last presenter, but she might have sold herself a little bit short. She is a partner in the farming operation and knows a lot about it. Another couple of corrections. The Wertz's came here. The reasons the Wertz's are in Pinal County was because of weather. My grandfather and grandmother, Fred and Eunice Wertz, got tired of the blizzards in South Dakota and came to, traded their farm in South Dakota to a little farm west of Coolidge. And that's how we got to Coolidge, Arizona. But it was in October of '29, just before the Depression started. They brought out, there were four boys that came out. My dad was the youngest. He was five. The oldest was 10, lived in a tent the first year. And we've been farming and making it work ever since. Arizona's always been a great place. We all love farming. My dad taught me a lot. He was very involved with water issues. The 1980 water law, bringing CAP water to Arizona. And he's always had some sayings that I have to always use. One of his favorite is, "Growing oats not for sissies." He's 99 and a half years old now. And every birthday I have, I believe him more and more. And the other thing he always told me, he said, "Greg, if you farm long enough here in Pinal County, you're going to see what I saw in the 50s and 60s and that's seeing farmland go back to desert." And as I start my 44th crop, I'm starting to really wonder about that, that maybe I might see that. That might could be an issue. Arizona's always had issues with water currently. The drought has just exasperated it, made it a lot worse. A big decision, the big choices is both people and plants like water. And you've got to make that tough decision, who's going to get that of the water that remains. Our land is, we have four children. Bobby's one, our son. None of them are in the prospect or so far want to farm. And so Laura Lee and I are the last of the farming in my side of the family. And we're just talking about ending it and being close. We thought of retirement. We better take advantage of the prices we can. Nextera's been very good with us. We've thought we did everything right. We got the zoning changed. It's all done correctly. We spent a lot of time doing that. Land is a farmer's 401K. And as we get into retirement, we thought this was a good time to start downsizing with equipment and land. And that's one of our issues for doing this since we're the last ones and don't really want to pass it on. What else? Maybe that's about it. Thanks again for hearing us. Tough decision. I'm glad that the supervisor stepped up to be elected, to make these decisions for the county. It's a very hard job and make some tough decisions. But that's what you're challenged with and that's what you're tasked with. Thank you.
That's all the cards I have. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Before I close the public hearing.
My name is Tom Bagnell. I live at 7443 South Sunshine Boulevard in Coolidge. I am fully aware of the impact that solar panels and battery storage has on properties. I have solar to the west of me. I have solar to the south of me. Battery storage to the southwest of me. I contacted Nextera and I said, what's the plan? If something happens down there, let's catch fire. They said, well, we'll have to get it back to you. So they got back to me and I said, okay, so what's the plan? Well, we have a plan in place. Well, can you send it to me? Yeah, we will. Haven't seen it. They also told me that, I said, well, they said they have this technology to put the fires out, keep it suppressed. I said, well, what is it? We can't tell you that. And I said, why? They said, it's proprietary. They've already had an inverter fire across the road from me. They had a fire under the panels over at Story Solar. And they are constantly having suppliers that are going back and forth to the Old Williams Place. And a lot of times I come out and I find them parked on what is part of my property along Highway 287. And, you know, you want to talk about trampling on private property rights. They did it to me all the time. And I contacted J.D. Ruline. He said, oh, yeah. He said, well, we'll look into that. He said, what do you think could help? I said, put up a sign pointing down to the Williams Place. Oh, okay. So they put the sign up. Well, again, that's still Zone General Rural. And they're operating a commercial enterprise off of that and have been since they started with Pinal Central. So when it comes to Nextera, I really don't have a lot of faith in these folks. They're here to get what they can. They're locusts. So I hope you guys take that to heart because, you know, we're done with it in Coolidge. We don't want anymore. And this is right in our planning area. So please, help us out and let's put this thing to bed and not have to deal with it again. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? This gentleman? Guys got your question ready?
Yeah. How you doing? Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chairman Miller, Supervisors, and fellow county neighbors. My name is Dylan Lewis. I grew up in a very small town in Sisseton, South Dakota, on the Indian Reservation of the Lakota-Watam Sioux Indian Tribe. I came from a long line of farmers, cowboys, and small business owners. And our family own just over 1,000 acres of wheat and corn farmland. I understand what it means for hard work and to take care of the land. I also understand what it means to build a new generation. And so, that being said, I've called Pinal County home for 30 years now. And honestly, I love farmers. That's my family. But believe it or not, farming and renewable energy, they go hand in hand. I don't see all the reluctance is or why we have them, but they're here. There's many reasons for that. But on that note, there is a misconception that Nextera Energy just comes in and kind of fly-by-night, you know, boss people around, and that they're not here for the people of Pinal County. And I know that's not true. I know it's not true because they believed in me and my company and gave us a chance when no one else did. And when I started a renewable energy company 17 years ago with the recommendation from former mayor Michael Tucker, I was able to form a company with homegrown men right here from Florence. Fred Padilla, Andy Padilla, and Joe Martinez. We had all the ROC licenses. We had the A17, the K11, K77, the KB2. And we had the workforce. We had the passion. But no bank would lend to us because, A, they didn't believe in us and they didn't know about solar. They didn't believe in that either. Except the ones that did believe in us after we went years looking for funding for our projects. The one company that believed in us, these small-town guys from Florence, was Nextera. So, that being said, they stopped, they stepped in, they partnered with us. And we've done over 30 projects since, schools, municipalities, even one of the biggest churches in the country, Dream City. I have to say, they might have an office in Florida, but they are local. I know they're local. They didn't just hire us. They stepped in, they helped us build careers. They hired local people who now actually are buying homes, raising families, contributing to this community. And so Supervisor Vidialo, I know this resonates with you specifically, the belief that you don't have to go to college to succeed, that trade certifications, skilled work are a great path to success. That resonates with me too because it's happening. That being said, where do we go from here? If we go ahead and we do vote this down, where do we go from here? This is a small project. It's 160 acres. $6 million are going to Coolidge Public Schools. This project creates jobs and a significant amount of infrastructure and helps solve the current water dilemma that we are facing in Pinal County. Also, we have about a 30-year plan going on here. And within 30 years, right now, we're at 500,000 people. That's going to 1.2 million. We're going to need the extra capacity and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chairman Miller, Board, Staff. I always appreciate, thank the staff just because they have to put all this stuff together. Thank you for your time. Couple of points I want to point out that I don't think have been addressed. Actually, Dylan just hit on a little bit. I'm local, small business, live here in Pinal County, have, love the county, love the opportunity. I'm in Ag. Most of you guys that know me know that. Farming's tough. Nextera provides opportunities and options for guys if you're willing to do some work. It's another opportunity for local business. I'm taking advantage of that. I appreciate the opportunity. The other thing I just wanted to add, as far as what I have personally seen, and this was even before I was with these guys, helping the community in the sense of sponsoring FFA programs. The second thing is being at our local Pinal County Fair, helping our rural kids with their 4-HNFA projects, funding that. I think they are here from what I've seen. And like I said, as a local businessman in Pinal County, living here in Casa Grande, they are a new, and what am I trying to say? It's a new opportunity for businesses, for businessmen, to look at them for opportunities. So with that, I just want to thank you guys. I want to urge you to support this and thank you for your guys' time.
Did you give us your name?
Sorry, Richie Kennedy.
I know who you are.
Yeah, I know you do. Do I need to give my address? I should have known.
Just general location.
Richie Kennedy, Casa Grande.
Tom, did you want to say something? You kept standing up, so I'll give you an opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, good to be in front of you today. My name is Tom Scott. I've lived in Coolidge since 1988. Our family came to Arizona in the 1880s, so we've been here. Farming background and farm equipment business. You know, it's true about the water. Sometimes we have it, sometimes we don't. But we've all been able to adapt to what we have. Our businesses flourished in some years, got pretty tight in some other years. And that's just the way life is most of the time. Currently, in Pinal County, there's roughly 40,000 acres of solar already approved. So to put that in something that's measurable, if you divide that by 640, that's 62 square miles of our county has already been approved for solar. Wouldn't it be wonderful if all of these sites got together with SRP and APS and figured out how to pool this energy so that it would stay here instead of being, in some cases, shipped off to other locations? Another thing was brought up that when these solar sites are developed, that there's lots of jobs. And there is while they're being built. But after they're built, there's no jobs. There's no full-time jobs. And there won't be one full-time job at this location. Another thing that's kind of interesting, you have citizens that get up here and talk before you that live here. You know, I live in Coolidge. I'm vested in the interest of Coolidge and I want Coolidge to grow, but we've got to grow in the right way. As the city planner got up here and said, you know, that this location is in our growth path. And we feel that, you know, the Santan and Queen Creek area will soon be built out and those folks will want to come down to our area. And the east side of Coolidge is where a lot of this development will happen. And I believe that it'll be kind of ranchettes. There'll be some subdivisions, parks, things of the nature. There'll be a commercial development out there. And if we stick these type of projects in the wrong place, it'll deter that growth. I think you can look around Coolidge. There's 8,800 acres that are approved there. And there's no planned development. There's no housing developments going in by these things. It's just like the neutral zone. So please vote against this proposal because it's just in the wrong place. There's hundreds of thousands of acres all along those transmission lines away from where people live, where people recreate, that these things could be built. And then that energy can be generated and saved for the area. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Board Supervisors. I'm Barry McCain. I grew up on Queen Creek on a farm. I've stooped in a lot of education in college. And I did solar energy as far back as the 1970s. But my whole family's been about one thing. Protect family. Protect life. And the technology for solar is not there yet. Before you pay it off, it's got to be replaced. I'm not so concerned about that as much. I'm worried about our people that live in the area. These solars, they explode. They've been doing it for years. And just like TRW in Queen Creek, it would go off three times a week. So the decision that you make is to protect life and the technology is not there yet. I know Mondi, I know. I talked to the Arizona Corporation Commission for years. I understand the technology is just not there yet. We have to protect life. So I'm asking you to use prudent judgment on your decisions because life can't be replaced. Parts can. Thank you.
What else?
My name is Cade Lewis.
Wait, get to the microphone first.
My name is Cade Lewis. I live in Florence. I'd just like to say, he's talking about protecting life. How about all the elderly people that die when their AC is cut off? Do you think about that? Do you see it on the news all the time? Because I know I do. I don't have numbers on it, but it's pretty terrible. And I was a CNA for eight years and I love my elderly people. And this is one thing, that they can't defend themselves against this. So I think this is something we have to have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I believe my colleagues have a number of questions, so I don't know who will be called up, but be prepared. Go ahead, Rich. Start with you.
Thank you, everybody, for their presentations and thank you for speaking up, whether it's a yea or a ding. I want to ask, on those 70 letters that you had mentioned, how many live in the area?
I would say, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Vidialo, it's about 70 letters. And I'm going to ask...
going to ask, how would you say, Vanessa, what would the percentage be? They're all in this vicinity, and they're all in Penale County.
You sure about that? Just want to double-check, because I probably read at least 30, 40 of them, if not 50 of them, that were not from the area. So I just want to ask that question, maybe I missed.
I have not read every one of the letters.
I did.
And they're here, so their addresses are, you know, all over, here's Casa Grande, here's Coolidge.
Give me one.
San Manuel, so you're right, they're from different places, but in Penale County.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, there's a lot from Maricopa County, there was a lot from Phoenix, there was some from Scottsdale, there was a lot from, just, I read them.
Those we took out, yeah.
Okay. So, a lot, nope, 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 let him finish. So today we have roughly 13, 14 people who got up to speak, for yes, and I have three from Coolidge. I have people who got up from Coolidge, who were against the project, I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, I have one from Maricopa, and then I had a yes from Maricopa, mostly everybody's from out of the city, except for two. So, from what I've read from your letters, and what I'm hearing from my constituents in the area, is that they're against the program. So I just want to let you know that I'm looking at these numbers, and I'm basing it on that, and then also the public safety side of it, which I have discussed numerous times. I'm very concerned about batteries. I am a solar guy, I have it on my house, I like to make sure that people know that, but I am petrified of putting batteries on my house. So I just wanted to make some of that, and then the tax revenue, I heard somebody say $6 million. Is that generated over 30 years? Because I have numbers from other ones that don't generate more than a couple hundred thousand dollars, and then it just keeps declining, and then it stops after 10 years, it flattens out. So I just want to make sure that when we're throwing numbers out, we're sure of the numbers, because I have tax numbers right here. That's all. So, I have my concerns, but again, I just wanted to point out some of these things, and I just wanted everybody to know in the public. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Vitello, would you like me to get the right answers to the question about money, or you're okay with your statement?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to know what your expectation was, so.
I'm good.
And, Mr. Chairman, I do have a response to a few comments, but I'll take whatever questions you have.
Okay. You want to go ahead and comment right now on those questions?
Yeah, if I could, just in general, there's a lot of comments here today, let me kind of synthesize it down to just a couple.
Okay.
Of all we've talked about here today, it seems to me that the fact that this is in the wrong place, from my friend, Mr. Scott, this is in the place that's been designated for this use. To deny this case today, if you all choose to do so, which you can, you would in effect be saying, you are denying the only zoning case that is, that could be brought in this comprehensive plan category, and you would be saying to Mr. Wertz and his family, go back, we didn't mean what we said two years ago, go change the comp plan to something else, and you can ultimately develop your property. That's one thought. The second thought is, of all the people who have spoken here today, I think we ought to really pay attention to Linda Brady. I've never met her, I never talked to her, but her comments from Salt River Project are enlightening to all of us. There is huge demand, and Salt River Project provides, in its territory, three portions of your districts, and it will grow in magnitude. You already have Superstition vistas exploding, you have Santan Valley exploded, and more, and other users are coming in that direction, and like she said, on behalf of Salt River Project, they need this storage and this battery generation to supplement what they have. I thought that was very telling, I'd never talked to her, heard from her before, but I thought that was interesting. And, and I'll be quiet at that, I'll stop right there. Thank you for listening to me, we believe it ought to be approved.
So, yeah, Mr. Pew, you know, you're talking about APS and SRP, and they have to double their output by 2035, and that's, we know that already, we hear that. One comment was made, though, Mr. Schoff, you're not here anymore, I don't see you. He was talking about, yeah, he's from Maricopa, but he was talking about lithium-ion batteries and iron phosphate batteries, and so he was mixing the two in, so are these lithium-ion or iron phosphate?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McClure, I mean Supervisor McClure, I do not know the answer to that, but I'm sure somebody on the Next Terra team does.
I'm sure you've got somebody back there that can answer that.
Josh Knows.
Hi, hi Board, I'm Supervisor, I'm Josh Adams, I'm an engineering manager and fire safety subject matter expert for better energy storage systems. So, lithium-ion and lithium-ion phosphate are not mutually exclusive terms, lithium-ion is kind of the higher umbrella of the technology, lithium-ion phosphate is one of the lithium-ion technologies. There are a few different chemistries that all fall under the lithium-ion umbrella.
So which are these?
I don't know exactly what batteries, I don't know if the batteries have been selected for this project, typically at this point, the exact model of the batteries hasn't been selected, but they will be, they will always be lithium-ion. We only use lithium-ion.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Any other questions?
I, I just, I've got a, oh Jeff.
No questions, I was just going to make some comments, but if we want that now. So, I'm in communication with most of the mayors in the whole east that go to the CAG area. Every mayor and every city government is against this, they just don't think they can grow into this, up against this, and so, once you get this, you're not going to get anything else. So it's this or nothing, so that's the thought of tens of thousands of residents that, that I communicate with.
Okay, I, I guess I have a few things, one of them is, I'm glad Linda was here, that she was able to get up and talk a little bit about some of the potential shortage that we have. I know there's been a lot of speculation out there that we actually send our power that we generate over the years outside of Arizona, which is probably the case, but now it's reversed completely. I mean, we're all aware of that. We're all very much aware, we heard a lot of, even from the city of Coolidge, the town of Coolidge, and other communities, the potential growth and the growth that's already happening, it's here, and it will get much more as we move forward. And so it's, it's part of our responsibility here, and with the communities, the cities and the towns, to be able to look at the future of all of this. Somebody was talking about the safety, the livelihood, the quality of life that people have here. And so, I think whenever we look at industry, any industry that's come into this area, they've looked at two factors, water and energy. I sit on the economic development for the greater Phoenix area, I sit on that committee, and that seems to be the biggest force for a lot of these larger companies that are coming into this area, what they look at. With that being said, 85% or 80%, 80, between 80 and 85% of our population in the Santan Valley leave our area to go to work. And I think it's heavily populated in Maricopa, that leave our areas to go to work. And so one of the things that we took as a board here not too long ago, was the initiative to bring employment centers here to our area. That's been, that's been something that we've strategically tried to plan towards that, and we have been effective, for the most part, of being able to attract different businesses, manufacturers, to come here. And I, for one, am not in favor of seeing that change. You know, I've, as was pointed out, I'm one of them that voted for the change in that comprehensive plan in that particular area. And a lot of it had to do with discussions that we had with SRP in regards to the grid, and what was going to be coming, and what needed to happen, and then in conjunction with that was the main power lines, where is the connectivity, where does it make sense to do the connectivity? I don't want to be like Texas and run out of power. We haven't had a blizzard, I know we've been praying for a blizzard here, but we haven't seen it yet, we probably ought to improve our praying abilities, but nonetheless, there's a potential for a shortage of power. Somebody just mentioned the town of Gilbert, how they shut down for a couple of days, and what it, the problems that it created for them. So, as I'm sitting here, and this, I've been on this board for eight years, and one of the things that's been really heavily on my mind, and as it's been pointed out earlier, and has been many times, I'm not a perfect person, I have a lot of flaws, but I really think I try to give a lot of attention to a lot of the things that have been here. That's what my people, when they voted me into this position, to look at these things objectively, and with the opportunity for growth, to give quality of life to those that are here, and to the future that's coming, because they're coming. I read an article the other day, with the fires and everything that has happened in California, we are becoming inundated with people moving from California and from other states that are being attracted to this region. I, I know that we need to be prudent in our decisions as we go forward, I think that's a responsibility that we all have, but considering how quick they can actually put up these facilities within a matter of a couple of years. Nuclear power was mentioned earlier, I'm a big proponent of that. But with the shutdown of some of our coal plants, and then the reconstructuring of what they have to do, and we've got, I don't know what, four coal plants that are functioning in Arizona now, we had five, and then we've got, and then, you know, nobody's talked about the safety and everything, I remember, I'm a native of Arizona myself, and I remember when Paula Verdi first came into play, and all the discussions about the safety and the environment and everything else, just like that's being brought out today, was in discussion, and we don't hear any kind of discussion on Paula Verdi anymore. And as you can tell, this has been something that I've actually looked at, one of the things that we've been able to accomplish in the result of all these different solar plans that have been come before us, I personally think there needs to be a balance. And we have a program moving forward that we're going to be meeting with our providers of power, we as a county, in a strategic plan, looking, going forward, that I think is important, that we do. But with this particular project, and what we decided here a couple of years ago is what it was brought into, and what was mentioned, I'm seeing the need for this, and I think you pretty much can tell where I'm going to go with the vote on this one. So if there's anything else, I'd like to make a motion, Chairman.
Let's see, is there any other questions? Oh, before you do your motion, I'll make a, just a quick comment, I'll, I've studied this thing six ways to Sunday, for every opposition, I can find a contradictory positive to each and every one of these issues that have come before, before us with, from safety to land values to whatever, I mean, there's, it's all across the board, there's no right answer, I guess, is the way to really look at it, because I, and I don't, I look at it with the property rights, that I'm a property rights type of person, this is not a, this is not harming anybody in the surrounding area. The lands adjacent to this are farms, and they'll be able to continue to farm, there's nothing that's going to stop them from farming with this, there's a very bad passive use of this land at this point in time to turn it into solar. I agree with the development to the west of 87, 287, all these things just come and go down. I don't like the look at a solar panel on a roof on a house, but I've never stopped anybody from putting one up, because if that's what they want to do, they can certainly do it. I don't look at looks, looks is not the reason I make decisions, it's property rights. And then I think the Wurzes have the right to use this land to make it productive to them, and in this case, to the county. I don't know if you heard me talk about how we're losing tax money on all those properties out at the auction, Indian Reservation, but we need to generate more revenue for the taxes, for the services that we provide for our community. I know it's on a declining depreciation, but at 10 years, it flattens out, it's there, so it's more than what we would get on farmland. I don't, I see more positives than I see negatives, and so that's why I will support this as well.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I don't know, maybe this is towards staff. The first phase of this is changing or amending the pad, and then, or, and then the other part is the zoning part, or?
I think it's just the opposite.
Opposite?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
We're doing the zoning, and then we're doing the PAD.
Okay, 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 thank you. With that being said, when it comes down, if this is approved, when it comes right down to it, as far as the aesthetics and things of that nature, and I'm thinking of different areas that have these type of facilities, town of Queen Creek for one, they've got a block wall that's right in the middle of subdivisions, and I didn't even know that it was a solar plant until Linda came into the office and said that it was SRP's solar plant, and it's surrounded by homes and everything else around it with block wall. And so, is that stuff at a later date than those type of stipulations? As it comes up?
That's site plan review.
Mr. Chairman, members of the supervisors, those things occur at the time of site plan review, and so the zoning case has, it needs to go forward with the PAD, and then the work begins with the staff on all the technical aspects of the site plan.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how, that's how it's handled.
Okay, all right. You'd think after eight years I'd figure that out, right? Okay, all right, that answers my question then.
Okay.
Okay, we're ready? Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 18 as presented with 21 stipulations.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Chairman, if I may, I believe this with 20 stipulations, can I get staff to confirm that?
Did I say 21 or 20?
It says 21.
It says 20 right here.
Oh, I've got the revised part, though.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the first rezoning case has 20 stipulations, and then the PAD has 22, or 21.
Okay, so.
Say that again?
Okay, I'd like to.
Zoning? We're doing the zoning first.
So PZ-017-24 has 20 stipulations, PZ-PD-011-24 has 21 stipulations.
Okay, all right.
All right.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 18 as presented with 20 stipulations.
Do I have a second? Well, I'm going to second it, I'll second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye, let's do a roll call.
Supervisor Vitello? Supervisor Goodman?
Yes.
Supervisor Sertie?
No.
Vice Chairman McClure?
No.
Chairman Goodman, I mean Chairman Miller?
Yes.
That motion fails, two to three.
Item number 19?
Is there reason?
Would you pleasure forward with it? Well, I believe we still have to vote on it, don't we? We still have to vote on item number 19.
What does that do to us? Can I ask that question?
Yeah. You can ask council, or staff.
Can I ask that question? What does it do to us, staff, council?
Yeah, I think our attorney will kind of.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, is there a specific question, Supervisor Goodman?
Well, I, the difference between the two, I mean, is it vital that we have the zoning change?
Zoning didn't pass.
I mean, I mean, no, but is it, but then with the pad change, does that make it, does that, how does that affect the pad change?
Mr. Chairman, may I have a moment?
You bet. Oh, everybody's been calling Chairman Goodman, so I, sorry, man, I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Supervisor Goodman, so the question that I believe Supervisor Goodman asks is, is the legal effect, if we were to vote on item number 19? were to vote on item number nineteen? So this board can vote on number nineteen, but it has absolutely no legal effect. It'll essentially be a vote on, on nothing because this board has not approved item eighteen.
Okay.
If we want to get into more specific details, I might suggest an executive session, but that's the advice that I'm willing to provide out here in the public with this specific item.
What do you think?
Okay. Well, I can tell you right now.
It essentially has no legal effect. So the board would be voting on nothing.
Okay. So maybe?
If I call for the motion?
To withdraw?
No. I call for the motion? There's no motion. Dies for lack of a motion.
Okay. Is that right?
Just to be clear, Chairman, you stated that you're going to call for the motion on the actual item?
Yes.
You're not going to get a motion?
It looks like it.
At this point, we haven't.
Okay, so therefore then the actual item dies for lack of, um...
Lack of motion.
Yeah.
You want that more formal or is that good enough?
That's fine from our perspective, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Dies for lack of a motion. Okay, item number twenty. Decision approval, disapproval of case CSR zero zero four dash two five, Winko Foods. You ready?
I am waiting for my PowerPoint and I will be ready. All right. Good to go. We're good to go. Hello again, Kendall Riley, Title Planner, here to present to you case CSR dash zero zero four dash two five, uh, the Skyline Ranch Comprehensive Sign Package Amendment.
Give them a, give them a second to clear their room here because it's...
Want to hold on just a second?
Yeah.
Let's... Just a second. Get this down. Ready?
Okay. I have a... Hmm? Coca-Cola case. Case.
Ready?
Okay, I'm going to continue if that's okay.
Please do.
All right. Uh, so Winko Foods is requesting an amendment to an existing comprehensive sign package that was approved in oh-six, um, for CSR dash zero zero seven dash zero six. Applicant and agent is Indy signage sales and applicant is present today to, uh, answer any questions you may have. Um, the actual parcel numbers, um, that these signs will be located on are provided on the slide, um, but the comprehensive sign package will include the whole, um, Skyline Ranch marketplace. Uh, subject site is located at the northeast corner of North Gary Road and West Hunt Highway. Here's a county map showing the approximate location marked by the red star in San Tan Vicinity map also shows the notification buffer, um, for mailers sent to the surrounding owners. The aerial map of the marketplace and the area that the sign package, uh, covers. So the black circles are going to be the locations where the amendment is going to be made. Uh, number four in green is going to be new internal directional signs for the different shops. Uh, the two colored blue circle is going to be, um, a change in what was approved for the monument signs. So this is what is existing on-site. Here is the proposed new, um, monument sign. Um, it is increasing from ten feet to eighteen feet, um, but is also narrowing, um, in width. Here are the new internal signage that'll be, um, in the site. Um, there'll be three total. Some site posting locations, we posted on all, um, sides of the marketplace. Some items of consideration, total increase of square footage is eighty-six square feet. Uh, the increase in height from the original approval is over, uh, fifty percent, which requires board approval. Uh, the sign review committee recommended approval, three to zero. Uh, community development director recommended approval with no stipulations and county has not received any public comment. Staff recommends the board supervisors to approve this case with no stipulations.
Okay. Any questions, the staff? Is the applicant here?
They are present, yes.
Do you have any, do they want to present anything or?
They did not provide a presentation, but they're here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Board's pleasure.
Public hearing.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, public hearing.
Our pleasure to have a public hearing.
Anybody want to talk, speak to this? I see somebody standing up. I'm closing the public hearing. Okay. Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a, a motion that we approve item number twenty as presented. And is there, how many stipul, no stipulations?
Okay.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. 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 Or say nay. Ayes have it.
Let's help some of that.
Thank you.
Tax loss.
Number, um, twenty-one. It has a public hearing component as well. And, um, Mark Reader, are you going to present or is Leo or Angie, who wants to come up?
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Angie Woods, Director of Office of Budget and Finance. The public hearing that is on the agenda, uh, this afternoon is required by Arizona Revised Statute, Section eleven dash three ninety-one, uh, for proposed to incur long-term financing obligation to refinance for debt service savings. All are a portion of the payments due to, uh, the county's first combined lien purchase agreement and/or second combined lien purchase agreement to make payment to the Arizona State Retirement System pursuant to Section thirty-eight dash seven thirty-seven D, Arizona Revised Statutes, and to finance the cost of acquisition and construction of and improvements to county facilities. Today, we will have you open a public hearing, um, but I would first like to read in some comments as a result of the notice that was in the paper as a part of the, um, requirements of the statute. And then after that, um, I have Mark Reader and Omar Daghastani from Stiefel Nicholas to give a presentation, which is also a part of the requirement of the, the hearing. So I will, there are eight comments that I'm going to read into the public record. These comments were provided to the Clerk of the Board's Office, um, prior to this meeting.
Okay.
The first comment is from Michael Blomquist. "I'm writing in with strong disapproval of the proposed refinancing being considered on our, on April thirtieth of this year. The tendency of increasing debt resulting in horrific refinancing charges is notably very poor practice and continues to create damage throughout our once great country. I've witnessed and documented a few disturbing increase in waste since two thousand eight within Penale County. I pray for leadership, which considers the wishes of the majority, true democracy, but currently sides with wealthy business and disagrees with the people. We just voted to renew the half-cent highway tax, which I approved, and have seen horrible waste since. If you would like examples, please email or call. It is very disturbing and disappointing. Please consider a responsible decision on April thirtieth and keep Penale County from slipping further into debt." The next comment is from Kathleen De La Rosa. Um, she indicates she's from San Tan Valley. Her comment says, "Estimated total financing costs of three hundred and seventy-two million six hundred and two thousand dollars, uh, three hundred and forty-six dollars. Why is the interest rate so high? What is the interest rate that will be paid to bondholders?" The next comment from Margaret Hill in the city of Queen Creek. "I approve of the proposed expenditures for additions, changes, and maintenance requirements. County government support is critical." The next comment is Rocky Magnar, and there's no address here. And it states, "Nowhere in this proposal is the time period this proposal covers." Next comment, Candace Steelman from San Tan Valley. "My vote is no because this is all grouped together as one ginormous project when it should be three separate votes. I also vote no because of the tendency to spend money we don't have, now have, and so we then pay a huge amount of interest. Separate these three requests and move forward with the parts for which funds are already in hand. Then pick one to two to finance if they are absolutely needed and start saving money for the third." The third comment is from Michael Vannard, um, from Saddle Brook. "I thought the county pension obligation debt was refinanced around twenty-twenty at a lower interest rate at that time. Does this bond refinance that same debt again? If so, how do the rates compare and what savings will be generated, both in terms of freight and overall costs to the taxpayer? Lastly, is the plan to pay off the obligation at some point in time? If so, when?" The next comment comes from Jerry Lago. Uh, there's no indication of where he, he resides. "Isn't there another way to obtain this money without incurring this much interest payment? Please, this interest payback amount is totally unreasonable. I'm totally against this amount of interest payment." The last, uh, comment comes from Arnold Gorton, which is from Queen Creek. "No, I would suggest to wait a little more time to give the Trump reforms more time to work." So with those comments, uh, the presentation that is prepared by, um, and will be given by Mark Reader and Omar Daghastani, um, will answer those questions. We've, we've taken those comments into consideration and, um, at this time I'd like to, uh, invite them up to speak.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Woods, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, good afternoon. I know it's been a long day for you, so we'll go as quick as we can here. Um, some of this will be a repeat to the board, um, since we've been in front of you the last couple of months as we've gone through the process. We have three things we're looking at, three, three issues. One, as you know, we're going to consider the refinancing of existing bonds issued in two thousand fifteen, as you recall, for infrastructure projects at a lower interest rate for savings to the county, as you're aware. Omar's going to talk about the ASRS refunding, uh, structure. And then I'm going to come back up and talk about the new money projects under consideration for about a hundred and ninety million. So those are the three. So I'll start, Omar will come up, and then I'll finish. Um, Angie did a great job of describing the purpose of our presentation and the requirement under eleven-three ninety-one, which is right here. You've seen this before. And, uh, down here, the hearing must include, and that's why we prepared this material for you, the need for the projects, the need to use long-term financing and any other available options to accomplish the project. So just summarize the statute here. This is what I just shared with you in terms of the three projects we're looking at doing going forward, um, um, that we did there. Uh, as you know, counties are limited by statute in what you can do when you want to finance projects, uh, and county, uh, the county could always, if you wanted, it's not the case here, uh, pursue a property tax election to issue general obligation bonds. We're not doing that, obviously. That's an option under the statute. We could do kind of an annual appropriation, which is a more expensive way in which our Arizona counties issue bonds for various purposes. Um, uh, you could always use cash, um, and, uh, we're not anticipating the issuance of additional cash at the moment as it relates to these three. And then number three is the excise tax revenue obligations are essentially, as you know, revenue bonds issued by the county, secured by various county revenues that we've, uh, worked with you on over the years and very common in Arizona. So this is the good news here. This is the refinancing that we talked about in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen, ten years ago. Uh, the county issued some bonds for various, as you can see down below, road projects, uh, widening of Ironwood Gansel Road, some detention facilities, some very much needed public infrastructure projects in the county. Ten years has bypassed and now we're able to refinance them. We had a ten-year lockout period, as you know. So you can see the interest rates were in the five percent range, give or take, and, um, we will want to, um, and when I average all those, about a four sixty. So right now you're paying about four point six on your fourteen and fifteen bonds that we did ten years ago. We want to try to get you three and a half percent money, maybe three and a quarter, bear with us. When we ran this, markets have been, been moving around, as you all know, we're starting to get some stability back. We will not be doing a transaction for ninety days, as you know, as we go through the process together. And, uh, back when we ran these numbers a few weeks ago, we had about three forty money. So in column six, just to get to the bottom line, we were estimating almost three million dollars of net debt service budgetary savings for the county and about two point five million dollars of what we call net present value savings as, uh, in today's dollars. So very efficient. We're keeping our eye on it. As you know, we only will pull the trigger if we get the desired level of savings. Right now, things are looking pretty good. So this is the good news on the refinancing of the fourteen's and the fifteen bonds that we shared with you several weeks ago and wanted to share with you, uh, again, for purposes of the public hearing. So I'm going to ask my, my, my colleague Omar to come up. As you know, Omar is our public pension expert relative to PSP RS, relative to ASRS. I'm going to have Omar go ahead and go through the ASRS refinancing plan and then, like I said, I'll come back up. So with that, I'll pass it over to Omar. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman and Supervisors. Thank you also to Leo, Angie, Hamancho, and Randy. Uh, you have an amazing team here in Penale. Uh, I know that we've talked, uh, in the past about the, the ASRS refunding program, uh, so I'll hit the high points here in respect of your time and obviously very glad to answer questions that may emerge. Uh, ASRS is one of the preeminent pension funds in the nation with best-in-class, uh, investment returns over the past thirty-five years. They've, uh, received numerous awards. We'll talk about their investment returns, um, and, and all of the things that have happened. Uh, one of the, they do however have a sixteen billion dollar unfunded liability, uh, that is a function of primarily increased life expectancy as well as more conservative investment rates of return assumed within their financials. Penale County's portion of that liability is approximately, uh, one hundred six million point three. And, um, it's a, a small component. It is, as you know, a, um, a multi-employer cost-sharing plan. Uh, there is the program, the CPP, and we'll, uh, if we advance to the next page, I can take you, uh, through that. But before we get to that, I wanted to just, uh, mention, uh, ASRS has a, um, trailing ten percent annualized rate of return of seven point six percent, uh, that outperforms, uh, relevant benchmarks by a hundred twenty basis points. Um, and while that is certainly no indication of the future, uh, it is indicative of the strength of the management team and their ability to outperform benchmarks over periods of time. These, of course, are from their audited financial reports. Uh, this is not our data, this is theirs. Pinell County's portion of that liability is approximately 106 million point three. And it's a small component. It is, as you know, a multiemployer cost-sharing plan. There is the program, the CPP, and if we advance to the next page, I can take you through that. But before we get to that, I wanted to just mention ASRS has a trailing 10% annualized rate of return of 7.6% that outperforms relevant benchmarks by 120 basis points. And while that is certainly no indication of the future, it is indicative of the strength of the management team and their ability to outperform benchmarks over periods of time. These, of course, are from their audited financial reports. This is not our data. This is theirs. We can go to the next page, please. Thank you. So, and again, as Mark said, for the refunding, we used conservative rates, and this was as of six or seven weeks ago. The market has improved and our borrowing costs in this scenario demonstrated savings of 54 million on a gross basis, 13.2 on a PV basis, with a borrowing cost of 581. I could reflect to you today, as of the close of yesterday's market, we would be at a borrowing cost of 561, so an improvement of 27 basis points, which is very consistent with when we talked about the market the last time. You know, the market is starting to improve and demonstrates more, delivers more savings, expected savings for the county. That would, in the current market, generate 62 million on a cash flow basis and 16.3 on a present value basis. And of course, that's even better than the public hearing numbers that were initially put out there. So we continue to go in the right direction and, you know, with any hope, we'll continue to. We can move to the next page, please. Thank you. Here we show the savings pattern, very conservative. Everything is backloaded, and I think this is a very wise policy. It's consistent with what other employers have done throughout the state, what Coconino County did when they entered into this type of transaction, and really gives the county a long-term asset that, you know, they can draw upon when needed. If you recall, a difference of the ASRS program relative to the PSPRS program, which we did finance in 2020, this one is flexible that you could move the savings pattern around should the needs emerge for the county in the future. We could move to the next page. Thank you. One of the other things I wanted to address is, these are expected savings, right? Investment returns, you'll be either make or your savings could go up or down based on the actual investment returns over the next 20, 25 years. So we did just a couple of basic calculations. On one hand, and we'll start at the bottom one first. On one hand, if investment returns fall short of the expected 7.5% and instead are, you know, 50 basis points lower on a prolonged basis, you still will save money, but rather than the numbers that we shared earlier, your savings would drop to 7.6 million on a present value basis. On the other hand, if ASRS is to outperform over that period of time and outperform by 50 basis points, which interestingly enough, if you were to talk to Director Mattson, is his, their modeling prospectively of the portfolio is their expectation is they're going to overperform. The savings would go higher here, up to 18.9%. And this is actually at the higher interest rate cost. So it'd be even higher in the current market. It'd probably be about 22, 23 million dollars in the current market. Again, that's assuming that ASRS were to overperform. But we just show this sensitivity to demonstrate both the risks and the potential returns to the county. We'll go to the next page. With that, I'll pause and ask if there are any questions. I otherwise very much appreciate your attention.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll turn it back to Mark Reader.
Thank you, Omar, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Let's go to new money. This will be a little bit of a repeat again. The county has under consideration six projects that was presented to you by staff. And you can see here the projects on your left, and you can see the current budget of around 190 million, new money. And so just wanted to share with the public and remind you of the projects and the estimated costs here. And so how are we going to pay for it? And there was a lot of dialogue, as you remember, with staff on this. This is a sample amortization of a bond issued by Pinell County for 190 million. And this is amortized over a 30-year period. Your county is going to grow, obviously, and it allows future generations to help pay for buildings, as you know, that last certainly probably 40 or 50 years. So we can change this any way the county wants. This is a pro forma. We have 475 money on there. My guess is if we were in the market today, we'd be 425 to 450. So bear with us. We try to be conservative here. And we're coming up with about 11, I'll round if you don't mind, about 11.9 million per year of debt service payable from the general fund of the county. Now, our refunding is going to save us 300,000. I wish we had more savings for you on that. That helps a little bit. So let's say 11.5-ish. So county staff in the budgetary process has shared with the board that this is an affordable annual debt service payment in connection with 190 million of new money projects forthcoming. So the board has seen this before. These are all the pledged revenues we talked about. Got about 100 million. The county's had some pretty good years. And we had our best year ever, I think, in 2324, where your local sales tax revenues are pushing about 40 million. So this is the potpourri of revenues that your county, as well as other counties around the state, utilize in terms of a borrowing to lower your interest costs to the investors. So all good there. That's our coverage table. I won't bore you with that. As far as a calendar is concerned, this is obviously a public hearing. There's no action. We've had two or three study sessions on the topics. Our next meeting would be in, I guess, the 28th of May, right here, would be our next meeting that you would consider a resolution authorizing the issuance of the bonds for the three projects that we've talked about. And if so, we would move forward and probably be in the market late June, early July. So I know that was a lot. I hope we've answered all the questions. The numbers in our public hearing with the interest costs are extremely conservative. We have to do that just to provide flexibility. So we hope that the information that both myself and Omar presented was helpful to the board. And with that, we're glad to answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Maybe a quick comment. Mr. Reader, don't go away yet, but I think this is really for Ms. Woods. So we talk about paying this back. And I, looking at those numbers, it's always scary to look at big numbers. But I remember my first mortgage I had was at 12%. And I saw what I was borrowing, yeah, it would have been 21 two years before that. But, so that dates me a little bit. But, you know, looking at what you borrowed and what you were going to pay back, back then, it was over three times what you borrowed. Now, this is about twice. So it's not quite as scary, still scary, but not quite. But when we look at paying this back, we're looking at the growth of the county over 30 years. And we've discussed this in the back. But what are our growth projections running right now?
For which revenue stream?
Well, revenues, let's see, property taxes.
So primary property tax? So you know, that all depends on the net assessed valuation that comes from the, you know, both new construction and existing construction over the past several years, that net assessed valuation has been ranging anywhere from 6 to 11%. So, and we are not seeing any, you know, as new development comes in, as these commercial things happen, that's a direct impact to that net assessed valuation percentage growth. However, the revenue piece, as we go through the budget process and the tax levy rate adoption, and the board's discretion is to set a tax rate that obviously takes all of these things into consideration. And as you know, Vice Chair McClure, we have been reducing that tax rate over the last at least four to five years and plan to continue to do so. So the plan in paying this $12 million debt service payment is taken into consideration with all of those revenue streams as far as primary property tax goes. If you want to talk about the excise tax, the sales tax that we're actually pledging, our statewide sales tax, we're currently trending about a 3% growth on the statewide sales tax. However, the local sales tax, which is our county sales tax right now is just over 10% on this fiscal year. We haven't seen any change in that with inflation or even during COVID. We never saw any dips in those kind of changes or revenue streams. So it's only going to continue to grow as more industry, more commercial, and more residents come in and live in the county.
Right. So you're seeing a trend of 10% is what you said in that long sentence or paragraph.
Sorry.
So in our calculations for the repayment, did we not calculate it, what, 4%?
Yeah, we're very conservative in the out years. Anywhere from 3 to 4%. I think the current projection was around a 4%. You're correct.
So we're being very conservative and expecting it to be higher growth so we can weather the downturns.
Absolutely.
That's where I was trying to get out of that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions for staff? This has a public hearing component to it, so I'm going to open up the public hearing at this time. And I do have two speaker cards. So Trevor Gordon, would you like to speak?
My name is Trevor Gordon. I'm a resident of Gilbert. I just think that a big part that this will help pay for will is the reentry team for Pinell County with the effect that that can have on changing people's lives as they go from the penal system into becoming members of society. That just has a great opportunity to continue to change our lives and grow them into the best people that they can be. I think that this can really help them.
Appreciate it. I'm sorry, Trevor. It says you don't want to speak. I'm sorry. I didn't pick up on that. I'm sorry.
But he came up anyway.
And I do have another card, but now it didn't indicate whether they want to speak or not. Q Johnson?
Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board. My name is Q Johnson, born and raised here, Pinell County. Actually, I was born right down the road, General Hospital. Kind of dates me a little bit, but the reentry saved my life, man. And there's at least nine gentlemen there also that came from reentry. And they're in leadership roles, at least five of them are. And they plan on, once they're done, they plan on coming back to Pinell County and starting businesses. So that could definitely generate funds. Myself, I'm actually going to school right now. And I plan on making electric vehicles. And I've already talked to two different companies, and they're willing to help me. And there's a gentleman by the name of Rich Ganley, and he's actually on board. So he's helping me. And, you know, I can't say enough about the reentry. They, like I said earlier, they saved my life. I was a knucklehead out here running and gunning. And now I got something to look forward to. So that's all I got to say. Thank you all.
Is there anyone else that will speak to this? Other than comment period.
Hello, Board. My name is Tracee Sepola. I'm a resident of Pinell County. I was a probation officer here in Pinell County before. Before that, I worked at a detention center in Pinell County as a corrections officer and case manager. Currently, I serve as the Justice Liaison for Pinell County, working with Mercy Care, which we hold the REBA in this area. And my whole job is to make my community better by helping those who need the most help in our community, getting connected to services. And that would be impossible if not for Tracee Sepola and her team and the reentry program. And anything that benefits that program, I will wholeheartedly put my entire anything on. I don't think there's anyone in this room that hasn't had somebody touched by the criminal justice system in a positive or negative way, most likely negative. But I can tell you that when we treat the people in our community that need the most help with the most help, you see not only monetary gain, but you see safer, better communities because changed people change people. And I, not only an example of that due to having a lot of my family members being incarcerated and needing that help and not getting it, but just in my day-to-day job. So I'd like to support this as much as I can. And again, thanks everyone here, and especially the reentry program and their team helping me do my job effectively. Thank you.
Yes, young lady? Your name?
Good afternoon, Chairman Miller, members of the board. Dana Lewis, Pinell County resident, voter, and the county recorder. I'm wanting to applaud this effort in bringing forth so much great information. We've already discussed the unprecedented growth that Pinell County has gone through. And we can also look back to a few years back where we weren't forward-thinking, and it came back and it got us. So the fact that we're moving forward, looking at the growth and trying to be proactive for our residents is something to be looked at in a positive manner. Thank you, gentlemen.
Anyone else? See, none. I'll close the public hearing. And we'll move on to item number 22. Thank you, Mark.
Good afternoon, Chairman Miller, Vice Chair McClure, and respective members of the board. My name is Randy Stinson, Deputy Director with the Office of Budget and Finance. Today, we have Vicki Fisher with the Arizona Auditors General Office. In addition, we have auditing firm Walker &amp; Armstrong, and they will be presenting our financial and single audit findings for fiscal year 2023.
Good afternoon, Chairman Miller, members of the board. My name is Vicki Fisher, and I am a financial audit manager with the Arizona Auditor General. On behalf of the Auditor General, we appreciate the opportunity to meet with you today and to have our contract auditors, Mr. Curtis Bright and Mr. Randy Otway with Walker &amp; Armstrong, join us in presenting the county's fiscal year 23 audit results to you. Thank you for having us. Before Walker &amp; Armstrong presents the county's fiscal year 23 audit results to you, I would like to briefly explain our role as it relates to the audit. The auditor general is responsible for conducting annual audits of all Arizona counties or for causing those audits to be conducted. We sometimes contract out audits due to our staffing levels and other audit demands. When we contract county audits, we ensure that we select qualified CPA firms with the experience in auditing counties and the understanding of how they operate within Arizona. We have contracted with Walker &amp; Armstrong for the county's audits through fiscal year 2023. As part of our responsibilities related to the county's audit, we work with and provide a direction to Walker &amp; Armstrong and their audit team as needed throughout the audit. And once it's in its final stages, we review the county's draft financial reports prepared by Walker &amp; Armstrong to help ensure the reports meet applicable standards and the auditor opinions expressed within the reports are consistent with the financial statements and the reported findings. With that, I want to thank you for your time, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Bright, who will discuss the county's fiscal year 23 audit results with you.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. We issued the June 30, 2023 audit, and we issued three separate documents that you should have received, an annual comprehensive financial report, which is the financial statements of the county as well as our audit opinion. We also issued a report, a single audit report, which includes the specific audit for the federal funds of the county. And then there was a separate letter that should have been issued with the board. We have summarized these documents into a presentation for today. So the whole purpose of receiving an audit is receiving opinion of the financial statements. And I'm pleased to state that we did issue an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements, which means that they are materially correct as they apply to how a government should issue a financial statement. There is one major change from the financial statements from 2023 to 2022 in the accounts of accounting rules. There was a new implementation of a new accounting standard regarding subscriptions to bring the liabilities on the books for any contract subscriptions that you have in records. To talk about a few key financial performance measures, the total governmental cash was $392 million, which increased about $72 million from the prior year. This represents 92% of the total expenses of the year for 2023, so a fairly healthy reserve of cash. The total pension liability is $162 million, and that includes all funds, all plans that the county participates in. In 2023, we did issue three material weaknesses and six significant deficiencies for the related internal controls, and we'll talk about those at the end of the presentation. So as we look at some numbers, here's a summarized financial statement for the year ended June 30, 2023. So like I mentioned, the cash investments did increase, and the reason why that did increase is because the revenues exceeded the expenses for the year 2023. The other major changes in your assets or your capital assets increased about $255 million, and most of that is because you had about $324 million of additions in capital assets during the year. That was offset by depreciation for the year, spreading that cost over the life of the asset. Your non-current liabilities increased about $101 million, and that was because you issued some bonds payable of about $115 million during 2023. And then the deferred inflows also increased about $33 million. That's a calculation based off of the pensions mostly that the actuaries put together based off of how your actual pension plan, your actual results versus your expected results of the pension plan, and how they affect the county to smooth that out. We do also present separate business-type activities. This specifically talks about is related to the sheriff inmate as well as the Arizona, the Airport Economic Development Plan. And so these are separate from the government as a whole. So the cash did increase about $547,000 related to those. The capital assets increased about $9 million. Again, infrastructure was purchased during the year. And so we do present those separately. There's a separate opinion from the governmental activities to the business-type activities, which are the sheriff inmates and the Airport Economic Development Funds. For me, it's helpful to see things visually. So this is your long-term liabilities as they were as of June 30, 2023, the biggest one being your bonds payable of about $344 million in total. And then the next one being your OPEB and pension obligation of $162 million. So for me, it's easier to help visualize some of these numbers as a pie so you can kind of see what makes up your long-term liabilities as of June 30, 2023. When we talk about revenues for the county, the operating grants and contributions of $148 million did increase to about $54 million, and that's because you had additional funding regarding to the Emergency Rental Assistance Program and the American Rescue Plan Act. The other major increase in revenues was the capital grants and contributions, and this is, it increased about $26 million due to primarily billing grant and highway projects that were funded during the year by various grants and contributions. Overall, your taxes also increased about $28 million. The makeup of that is about $10.6 million in property taxes, $6.4 million in county sales tax, $5.1 million in state shared sales tax, and about $2.4 million of other miscellaneous taxes. Overall, your tax revenues are increasing from year to year. And again, a financial trend is to see how the last five years have gone on the revenue side for the various categories of revenues. It helps visually to see where the county has been and the trend of the county. On the expenditure side of the county, overall expenses increased $230 million, or about 60% from '22 to '23. And the makeup of that is the general government expenses. It actually decreased $11.9 million because in '22, there was significant IT infrastructure that was purchased that did not get purchased in '23, and then that significant decrease was offset by an increase in salaries overall. And then the other major change is public safety increased about $12.1 million, and that was almost exclusively from salaries and related items. Any questions on, and then here's a five-year trend for the expenses for the year. The other functions is because there was a significant increase in the capital outlay for the amount purchased during the year for '23, and that's why the other functions on '23 significantly shot up. Any questions on any financial information or number side?
Any questions? Okay, proceed.
All right. Just to see again the trend of where the revenues and expenses have been for the last five years, the blue being revenues and the red being expenses, and the green line being your net position is basically the net value or the assets exceeding the liabilities of the county. As you can see, each year it does increase year over year. Moving on to the letter that we have to discuss as part of the audit with the board directly, the accounting rules of the county are in one of your financial statements, and so it dictates how everything is accounted for within the financial statements. We didn't have any difficulties in performing the audit, although it has been delayed for various reasons. Getting information, obtaining information, there was no difficulties in working with the staff to perform the audit during the year. There was, we did have management sign a representation letter, which is a letter that we received as last part of our audit that dictates or tells us everything that they gave us was accurate and correct to the best of knowledge. So the last piece that I want to move into is the findings that we had through the year. And these are the findings from the single audit report that was issued or the report on internal controls. As it relates to the financial statements as a whole, our first finding was a repeat finding. We've had this for the last several years. It has, the cash finding reconciling cash has changed over the last several years, but it has still been there. And the last remaining item is there is a payroll bank account that has not been reconciled since 2016. The next finding related to receivables, again, this has been there for several years as well, and we've been working with staff and management to find a way to come around with this. Basically, the reporting has been difficult to try and figure out how to pinpoint this, but the cash receipts in July and August are assumed to be for the prior fiscal year instead of knowing exactly how certain court and other miscellaneous receivables and revenues are, what period the timing they're for. And so there's an assumption there, which there's been difficulty in getting accurate information for that in the financial statements. The third one, improving the timing effectiveness of the financial reporting. For several years now, the county has missed the critical reporting deadline. The financial statements are due to the federal government as well as the state nine months after the fiscal year end. So for the June 30, 2023 fiscal year end, it should have been March 31, 2024. We issued the report in, was it January, end of January, early February? January 28th was the date of the report of 2025. So the financial statements at that point are not timely, and so that's what this is related to, as well as other reporting items that we feel that the board should be receiving on a regular basis of financial information more frequently. Then finding them 2023-04 relates to IT. We've met with the IT staff to go through specifics regarding what items we found, however, because it's all, we don't want to have the specific details presented in public meetings because that would put the risk out there of where the risks are. And so we have met in confidential meetings with IT specifically to talk about where those specific items are. But they surround having a, performing and documenting a risk assessment and developing corresponding policies regarding that risk assessment. And then the next one is also related to IT, and that's just following NIST practices as a whole, which is what the standards of IT is related to. And so we have met with IT specifically to go through the items that we found as part of our audit to help with planning for the future for increasing the security of information technology. And then this last one is relating to account reconciliations. We did have an education services department that was not included as the financial statements. And as we were looking through it, the management was looking through it, determined that they should have been included in the financial statements, which required some significant changes to the financial statements. And then there was also some other entries that we had found as part of our audit that weren't fully reconciled. Management did reconcile them through the audit process, but it wasn't reconciled prior to the audit starting. So those are the financial statement findings, the single audit-related findings, which are specifically related to the federal awards or the federal money that is received. This first one is related to the timeliness of filing the financial report. Again, it's due nine months after the fiscal year end, and so I didn't want to put too much, there's not much really more to say that. It was due March 31, 2024, and it's January 2025 that it was issued. These next two are related to housing specifically. The housing department does receive a separate audit, and so other auditors did find two items related to the reporting that the housing department did for their HUD funding specifically. And so the amount of unrestricted net position reported was incorrect on the HUD program. And then the last one was also the restricted cash for the housing program did not exceed the housing assistance. And so both of those findings were related to the housing program specifically done by other auditors. With that, did you guys have any questions?
Any questions?
I think not necessarily of him, but some plan of action, what we're going to do to...
Yes, so, Mr. Chairman, yeah, quick question. So for the, not for you, but for Ms. Woods and Randy.
Yeah.
So, you know, 10 months late in reporting, I see that. And so, of course, that, this is a repeated, not offense, but repeated problem. And so I can see where it snowballs on itself from year to year to year. So what's going on to fix the problem?
Thank you, Vice Chair McClure, members of the board. With your permission, I'd like to provide an update of the audit and some of the things that we have done to address the issues that we have. Is that okay?
Please.
Sure.
Sorry, I'm not chairman today, because Goodman's not either, so I was just...
Our mission statement is inspiring the gold standard of financial stewardship. We continue to partner with county departments to provide training and to offer support in all aspects of budget and accounting and everything in between. During the past few years, our office has been busy hiring, educating, and creating processes that provide solutions to our audit findings. These solutions focus on fixing the root causes of our findings as well as implementing best practices. By implementing these best practices, we are preventing these future, we're preventing future findings from occurring. It also includes training and fine-tuning internal processes to ensure that we are reconciling timely resulting and more timely financial statements. The fiscal year 23-24 audit is currently underway. We began working with the Arizona Auditor's Office in December and currently have an anticipated completion date of August 2025. Meeting this goal will mean that we have completed this audit in eight months, a substantial improvement over the time it took to complete the fiscal year 22-23 audit. We continue to work diligently to issue more timely financial audit, and your support is greatly appreciated. So specifically, your questions are, what have we done to correct these issues? You're absolutely correct. Being late in the past does have a snowballing effect. For example, our audit was actually issued the first or second day in February of 2025. That's an overlap of when we started the current year's audit. So we recognize this, and that's why we have these internal processes to have checklists, to have processes and procedures, to work with departments to reconcile on a monthly basis, so not at year-end, okay, expecting all of these things to be done. So previously, you know, I believe that the thought process is, okay, we have all of these processes in place, we're compiling this data and completing our financial statements. However, in doing that, we recognize that there has been, there are items that we could have been more proactive in, and working with the departments on a monthly basis to make sure that certain reconciliations are happening and to keep some of these snowballing effect items from occurring.
Does that answer your question? Vice Chair?
So, yeah, I see where you're going, and yes, I understand that, and I'd much better to do it on a monthly basis rather than year-end because that's a huge headache for, and I understand that some of your issue too is you're relying on other departments to get you the information, which, again, doing it monthly is much better.
Chairman Miller, Vice Chair McClure, that's absolutely true. And in partnering, so we've done a lot to partner with those departments that we're reliant on. We've done a lot of educating them, and we plan to continue those efforts. Departments today understand much more of the impacts they have on this audit. They, we're working one-on-one with them. We're currently, you know, the things that this board has supported us to do, increase the number of our staffs, increase the salaries of our staff, we are now, what I would consider fully staffed to the point that we need to at this point in time. That doesn't mean that we won't ask for new positions in the future as items come forward or new findings are had and as we improve our processes and procedures. However, we're fully staffed at this point in time, and we now are equipped to kind of, so to speak, stop the bleeding and move forward cleanly, and then we start to move backward on some of these findings to correct them. So we're not perpetuating all of that into the future. We have to clean some of that up still, but we are fixing that now, and we're equipped to do that now.
Yeah, so do you think you'll be closer to your March date this year than 10 months over?
Well, as Randy already stated, the 23-24 audit is underway. It was due March of this last year. It'll be completed, we anticipate, in August. We will go, roll right into the next one. Actually, they will probably somewhat overlap again. And so to efficiently, you know, go from August to end of March, I'm not certain that we'll be able to do so, but we'll make every effort to do so. But we're going to continue to back that date up to that March deadline.
Okay, thank you.
If I might...
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm wait...
You're punchy here, but just go ahead.
So what I'm hearing is that corrective measures have been taken. Do you feel that the departments are doing what they need to do to help bring it up to speed to where we don't have these issues?
Chairman Miller, Supervisor Goodman, I think we've made improvements to that process, and we've identified additional solutions that we're putting in place to even make further strides in educating, sitting one-on-one with the departments that still we're having some issues with. So I would say we've made huge strides. Are we all the way there yet? No, but it is a great improvement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
More questions?
You're punchy.
Yeah. Well, this was for information only.
Absolutely. Thank you.
That's all we got.
Thank you.
Now, for the moment, you've all been waiting for an executive session. Who wants to make that motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we, oh...
Chairman, item number 24. We're going to withdraw that from the agenda.
Oh, you want to do that right now? Oh, you want to do that right now? Item number 24 has been, we've been requested to make a motion to withdraw it from the agenda. So can I have a motion to withdraw item number 24?
Mr. Chair, I move we withdraw item 24 from the agenda.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Now, in executive session, can I get a motion going to exec session?
Mr. Chair, I move we recess the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors and do something.
Go into the.
And, and go to executive session, yeah.
Okay. Can I get a second to that?
A second.
Favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nay. Ayes have it. We will be in executive session. We will come back out and do a couple more things, but probably around dinnertime.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Where we're at?
26.
26.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors of the Board. Do I make the motion or?
No, 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 you tell us what you want.
Tell us what's up.
Tell us what you want.
I love this learning experience.
The way the day's been going, many people made motions.
Chairman.
You can read it off the.
Chairman of the Board, members of the public that are still here, I'm requesting a discussion, approval, disapproval pursuant to ARS 11419 for the annual salary for the appointment is Brian Harrow is Chief Deputy Sheriff, position number 0499, in the amount of $178,000 to be effective April 27, 2025, and to ask for a double fill of the Chief Deputy Position 0499 while the current incumbent is on leave.
Very good. Nice.
Dude, you read the mo, I mean, you just read the motion. I mean, the whole thing.
Any questions of the Sheriff?
No.
What's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chair, I, I move that we, through the motion that he just read off.
As presented.
As presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Sirs. God bless you.
God bless you.